Yes, we have one regional impact recommendation for the Vaughn-Ferrell lot line adjustment and subdivision plan, which is item number four on the agenda tonight. And the project proposes to adjust the lot lines between three lots of record and one additional lot by subdividing the reconfigured lots. And a total of four lots would result from the subdivision plan. Staff recommends that the project is not of regional impact, as it does not meet the criteria.
Thank you for the explanation. Steph, does members of the board have any questions for Jillian on the recommendation? If not, what's the will of the board?
Also move.
Move to confirm the staff's recommendations, seconded by Mr. Mills. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero to confirm the staff's recommendation. Anything else in the planning and zoning administration report, Jillian?
That was all for today.
Any questions by members of the board for the staff on any other matters of concern? Seeing none, let's move to item three on our agenda, which is Skipper's Marine Corp. As the applicant and owner. And this is continued review for consideration of a waiver of full site plan review to amend a previously approved outdoor boat display and storage. The parcel is located at fifty-four Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 industrial and aquifer conservation districts, tax map two D, Lot twenty-nine. The agenda item has been continued from our November first, December sixth, January third, and February seventh meetings. Jillian, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from Skip?
Just a couple of updates since the last memo went out. We did hear from the fire department, and they have some concerns with the two proposed parking spaces located to the north side of the building, which will reduce the traversable aisle to less than the twenty-four feet that they require. So that is a point that should be discussed this evening, as well as a drive-by inspection, where it was observed that there is possible secondary business for custom motorcycles. We did do a parking calculation, and this would need to be approved separately if this is indeed a viable business that's on site. From the communication that we received this afternoon, we're told that this is not an active business. So that is something else that the board should discuss with the applicant tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Jillian. Skip, come up forward.
A little greener now.
There you go, yeah.
Skip Moyer, Skip's Marine.
Thank you. So Skip, the last time you were here, we were discussing some locations of some parking spaces, and we had continued the item so that you would have a chance to hear from the fire department about whether the changes you discussed had met their needs. Where do we stand with all of that?
Well, the only contact I had with the fire department was the first time, which I addressed their concerns. And then when I was here the last time, we were talking that I should have a couple more parking spots. So right before I left, I had pointed out to the board, you know, on the side of the building, based on the footage there, that might be an appropriate spot. At the time, I don't know which member it was, mentioned that, yeah, that should give you enough room, and that should be fine. So I put the two spots right there. And, you know, that was the gist of that. So there was really nothing to do with the fire department, other than the, you know, inquiry and then semi-approval at that time, that that might be a good spot. So that's why I drew it in.
Sure, sure.
With enough room to get by there, obviously. And, you know, the likelihood of those spots being utilized is probably going to be very rare, but, you know, we had to come up with something, so we decided that, you know, that might be a good spot. And that's it on that part. I can address the motorcycle sign next, whenever you want me to.
Sure. Let's tackle the parking spaces. I remember the discussion about the parking spaces, and I thought that when we were going over that, there was enough room there to have the parking spaces and still have the width that the fire department was after, but I'm hearing from the fire department it doesn't, so.
Well, I think they said they have concerns, right? They didn't...
Yeah, usually that means they don't like it.
Okay.
I have concerns means they want you to do it differently.
Okay.
So what they're saying is that...
Is there guidelines for that?
There is, and they're flexing them in your favor quite a bit already. Normally, they ask us to require the twenty-four feet clear aisle ways around parking lots and next to buildings and all of that stuff. I think that they base that on what the width of the fire engine is with its outriggers out for the ladder truck, which is the biggest piece.
Are there any precedents set, you know, for this? I mean, as far as...
Yeah, it's in our regulations.
Right. And the last time I was here, I had mentioned that there's parking along in front of Buckley's that gives wireless room than what I'm offering between the parking spot and the edge of the fire station. And I was just wondering, you know, if there are precedents set where if it's good for this person, it should be good for this situation. I don't know.
I think Buckley's probably has some access at different points around its building, whereas this is the only place that you can get near your building, near the side of it. So that's probably why, but I don't, I can't get inside the fire marshal's head.
There's only one access to the fire department on the right side. There's a river on the other side.
That's probably why they want that side to be wide enough for them to have their truck, but I would defer to the fire marshal, so you can have that discussion with them if they... What we have before us is an indication from them that they have concerns that those two parking spaces wouldn't provide them with enough access. So we probably have to consider different places to put those spaces, so that you have your four. Do you have thoughts on that? Where else you could manage that?
Oh, I had two spots I was going to put it in, but then I changed my mind when I left the board meeting that day, and she indicated that that was probably a good spot. I'm wishing I'd gone with my first thoughts now. So probably at the top of the driveway on the right, just before the water detention area there, probably put that one or two spots right there.
Is that where the boats are parked right now?
There's actually a pickup truck there, my dad's pickup truck that I...
The red one?
No, it's a blue Ford, and my mom won it in a lottery in nineteen eighty-seven. It's kind of a family gem, and I plan on restoring it. But I plan on taking that to my house. But right now, there's a vehicle parked right there, and there could be, you know, there's a boat next to it.
Okay.
But, I mean, I could utilize those as two parking spaces right there and keep the boats out of those two spots.
That makes sense to me. If you've got two spaces that you can clear for automotive customer parking...
Yeah. It's a good convenience spot. It's just to the right of where the other two parking spots are, just, you know, to the right there of the building.
Makes sense to me, especially if it satisfies the fire department. I think that they'd have to weigh in and provide their opinion on it. So tell me more, or go ahead and go into the details about the motorcycle sign or whatever that is. I don't know anything about that.
I want to say back in about two thousand and six or seven, I hired a Marcus Carolash as my marine mechanic, and he had just come up from the Midwest, and he had started a motorcycle business in Hudson, which the economy was failing, and he didn't get to a very good start. So he closed his motorcycle business and started working for me full-time as a marine mechanic. But he still had some cleanup in closing his business, customers that were still looking for their stuff and things of that nature. And I told him that I didn't mind during the bad economy if he did some things on the side, you know, to promote his business. You know, I oftentimes will let my guys use a bay on the weekend if a bay is available to, as we maintenance our own vehicles at Skip's Marine, you know, if they wanted to maintenance their vehicle, I would allow them to do that on a weekend in the off-time. And I was going to allow Marcus to do that, too. And then he was in a severe motorcycle accident and almost got killed. And he kind of got out of the motorcycle business, and he doesn't ride anymore. And he had put the sign up after I had talked to him about trying to accommodate and help him. And the sign was a surprise to me when I walked in one day, but I didn't say anything. It was just a banner. It has no address on it or phone number. It just says Hooligans Custom Motorcycle, because he doesn't do servicing. He custom builds motorcycles from scratch. It can take six to eight months to build. But he doesn't do that anymore. So the sign just kind of remained up there. We haven't been doing anything with motorcycles there. He does have his wife's motorcycle in his bay. It's covered with a tarp, but that's about it. And it's been sitting for four years now with no one working on it. I think he plans on selling it. So there's really no motorcycle business going on there, but that's kind of the gist of how that sign got up there. We will take that down tomorrow.
Okay, that sounds good. Great explanation, good final result with what you want to do. Just so you understand, whenever you're going to add any other secondary businesses to the site, it just requires that you check with these guys and make sure that you either have the approvals you need, or you get the approvals that you need one way or another. And very often, adding another business is going to change your parking requirements and all that stuff, so that's why it's worth checking.
I think we're kind of testing the market and the possibility of that happening, and it just didn't work out. It was kind of a, you know, it just didn't work out. And had it, we would have done so, but it didn't work out, and so, you know, it went by the wayside.
Fair enough. It doesn't, won't keep me awake at night to hear the story. I'm sure it'll be a perfectly satisfactory resolution to the question and the issue for everyone. But just so you know, in the future, if you're thinking about any of that kind of stuff, you got to make sure you get a chance to talk to these guys and make sure you know what your requirements are. You know, one of the things we talked about at one of those meetings, and I don't know, it wasn't really something we were requiring and couldn't require, but you were talking about finding some overflow space on somebody else's lot or being able to rent some space. Has that gotten anywhere for you? Because I think that decompressing this site and getting some offloading is really the key to you having long-term success.
I think there's just a transition that's been going on for a while now, from going from boat building into boat servicing and, you know, trying to find ourselves through this bad economy, where that lot should be sufficient. We just need to schedule and kind of control it better now that we've kind of got a handle on things. And there was a time where I didn't know if I was going to be at that spot anymore, but now that I am, I have some ideas on how to just keep it small, keep it under control. If there is a need for overflow, and I see that, I will check around. At this time, I don't think there's going to be. I'm just going to control it better.
Okay. I think the other thing that we were talking about when we were, when we met last, was producing this plan that you produced with all of the markings and notes that are on it. And I know that this issue with the couple of parking spaces in the fire department may throw an additional change on that. But is it your impression that this includes all of the different notes that are required and the things that we've talked about in our past meetings?
Yes.
Okay. Jillian, do you have a sense of whether all those things are met on this plan, other than dealing with this issue with the fire department?
I believe that they have been. I think it was just came down to getting an acceptable plan for the fire department.
Okay, that looks like what I have in my notes as well. Any other questions from other members of the board? Vinnie?
Can I just interject one thing? And I apologize. I just put the fire department's parking on the side, but go ahead if you'd like. I thought their biggest concern was at night, they wanted that cleared, not during the day's pursuit. They just wanted, because they know that we work on boats, and we have boats parked there on the side of the building, as the bays are open and we work in that area. And then at night, we're to keep that alleyway clear. So we could do the same with the parking when we're closed and not have anyone park there during the day.
Well, no, the parking works the opposite way. So let me do my best to explain what I know, but again, I can't speak for the fire department and the fire marshal. I think that they were trying to be as flexible as they can to accommodate the way that your business runs, under the assumption that during the day, if there's a boat there that's in the way, there's also people around that could help get that out of the way if they needed to get in. At night, none of that is true, so they need to be able to hit the site and get to the building if something's going on. And I think that they were actually being flexible in your direction that way, instead of saying that it has to be clear twenty-four seven, which is pretty frequently what they do require. So I have a feeling that's what their thought process was in this day-night kind of a conversation. But again, I don't speak for the fire department. Parking, that is our game, and we do, I can speak for myself on that one. Parking is there for your customers, so having empty spaces at night does me no good. I want them empty during the day, unless your customer is in it.
I think that was my strain of thought, is like, it should be okay to put them there, because the fire department only wants it clear at night. We just won't have cars there at night. So I understand that's not going to fly, but that was kind of my thought process, that it might be okay.
So those are two, those are apples and oranges. The fire department's needs are distinguishable day or night, depending on what they tell you. The parking is the opposite, though. Empty parking spaces at night when you're closed, I don't care for that. That doesn't matter to me. I mean, if you want to put boats in there at night, I mean, well, probably not, but...
No, we're going to keep it clear. Yeah. I was just thinking that it was a daytime parking offering, you know, where the fire department wouldn't care during the daytime. It was just when no one's around at night, to be able to move those vehicles, that you wouldn't want anything there, which we won't have anything there. But like I said, we'll just move the parking spots, that's fine.
Okay. So we'll find you some new parking spots. Let me get back to Vinnie's question for you.
Well, I just, I wanted to clarify, the new spaces that you're thinking about.
Vinnie, you're not on what you're...
The new spaces that you're thinking about, where are they located exactly?
Yeah, so you've got the circle. It would be up to the very top right-hand corner before you get to the building there, right in the right-hand corner, where I'm now showing some boat storage area. I'd have to, you know, reduce that and put a couple of car parking spots at the top there on the right.
Skip, can you pull the microphone closer to you?
Yeah, sure.
You're turned on, but it's too far away from you.
Yeah, sorry about that, so.
Got it.
Sorry about that. Top of the driveway to the right before you get to the building.
So more or less on the plan where the dimensions are shown for eighteen feet and six feet, somewhere in that general vicinity is what he's thinking about.
Okay, so two spaces there. Still makes a relatively narrow... I guess my recommendation regarding these parking spaces, we can sit here and discuss it all night long. Have you set up a meeting with the fire department and brought this plan to them and said, hey, where do you want them?
Sure, sure.
Where can I put them? What works for you? I mean, because we can conjecture all day long, and you can leave here, and then it comes back again.
Yeah, I can go talk to John.
I mean, I think it would probably make a lot of sense at this point, because at the last meeting, obviously, you put them in those spots, and then they had an issue with it. So we're just, we're turning wheels, and I think you can get this expedited.
Sure, I think that's a wise recommendation, yeah.
The second question I have for you is the automobile upholstery repair business. Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, I have a lot of upholstery. Like right now, I've got carpet going in two boats. I'm redoing all the upholstery on a ski boat and a Four Winds. He's got people that have dropped off cushions for their pontoon boat. So we mainly do marine upholstery, but occasionally, someone will bring him an automotive seat in, or a bench seat, and they don't bring the vehicle in, they just bring the seat into him, and he does the seat, and then they come and pick it up. So, you know, he does do some automotive upholstery for seats and things of that nature. He's done some chairs for people, you know, just to keep them busy.
His advertising is automobile repair, separate of your business.
Correct. Well, you know, I know that he has a business card.
He may do work for you, and I understand that.
Yeah, he contracts to me.
Well, he's, I mean, he's on the internet.
Right. Yeah. No, I advertise them, so to keep them busy, yeah.
As automobile repair?
Yes. No, I've done it as, yeah, convertible tops and things like that nature, yes. I have.
So is that part of your business, or is that a separate business entity?
You know, I barter with him. I barter with him. He has just one table in my shop, and he does mostly work for me, but occasionally do some automotive stuff. It's rare, but he does do it. It's just to kind of fill the gaps for him, so he can stay busy.
I'm all in favor of everybody doing whatever they can to manage their workflow and their business and all of that. But if you have two business entities located on the site, that's what I was talking about earlier. You got to get in touch with Jillian and see how that factors into parking and regulations, because two separate businesses each have their own requirements for parking and all of the other bits of our regulations. And that may put you in a place where you don't have the ability to provide, you know, two spaces for the upholstery business and four spaces for yours is now six. And you see how that gets, see how that affects things? So if he was an employee of yours, and he fixes your boats and does all of that, he's a part of your business. That's not an issue. And even if you occasionally service a car in your business, I don't even think that's a particular issue. But operating a separate business entity within your site is the thing that makes this a little bit different.
Right.
Got it?
Yeah.
Vinnie was up to what you're trying to...
Well, so, and I guess that's my point, is, is he your employee?
Well, I pay him as a contractor. He works for me, and I take...
Is he your employee?
Yes, he is my employee.
He's your employee?
He works for me. You know, when you're a contractor and you work for a business, you are under that guidance and you are under his direction, and he is under my command.
That's...
So will he work for me if I bring him my car seat?
Only if I say so.
So he's not a contractor, then? He's not a subcontractor, do you? You give him a W-2 form every year for the work that he does for you, as an employee? He gets paid from Skipper's Marine, whatever your company is.
Whether he files that or not, I have no idea. Whether he files his taxes or not, I have no idea.
I didn't say that. You give him a W-2 or a ten ninety-nine at the end of the, no, not a ten ninety-nine would be a subcontractor.
No, because the money goes through me. The money goes through me. I take the money in.
So he's on your payroll hourly?
Do you give him a W-2 or a ten ninety-nine at the end of the year?
I have, it would be a ten ninety-nine.
Okay, then he's a, then he's a subcontractor. He's not an employee.
No, that's correct.
Okay. So he is a separate business.
Yeah, it's part of the marine services.
So he is a separate business?
It's part of our one-stop shopping for, you know, servicing boats.
He is a separate business?
He is a separate business, but he doesn't, he operates out of his house. I mean, he comes to my place to do marine upholstery and things of that nature, but he doesn't actually, his location, not necessarily at my place to do his other business.
So customers don't bring things to him there, they bring them to his house?
I have allowed it, if he's asked me, I've allowed it, but we don't have to do that anymore. You know, we don't have to do that anymore. We can just tell him, Billy, I'm sorry, you can only do marine stuff here, because the planning board is not going to allow you to do automotive stuff here anymore. I'm sorry.
Well, it's not that we're not going to allow it. You need to accommodate it.
Well, I'm not going to, I don't want to accommodate it, though. That's what I mean. I don't want to have to go through those extra efforts, because that means I'm going to have to reduce my parking, and I can't allow that. I got to have the parking for the boats.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That'd be my stand, you know? I would just like say, sorry, man, it's over. You can do your stuff off-site. You can go to, you know, the used car parking lots and do whatever you need. I mean, you know, that's the way I would have to do it. I can't, you know, it's unfortunate, but...
Well, like I said, he doesn't advertise out of his house. He advertises at the address.
Yeah, I've been trying to help him out, to keep him busy, you know, because I saw he was struggling and...
It has nothing to do with Skipper's Marine. It's totally him. His advertising is totally him. His own business.
His own phone number and everything else, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So after we're done tonight, get in touch with the folks at the department and find out how to resolve that issue, either to get it approved or to get rid of it as the extra business, whichever it is that you choose to do. It isn't, your site's only approved for one business now, and that's Skip's Marine.
Right. But I am allowed to have him there working on marine upholstery for me, right? Because we're a full-service business.
Yeah, if he's working for you.
Right, okay.
Other comments or questions by members of the board?
I want to talk about parking. Since that's what we're here talking about. I'm looking at the approved site plan, and I know there was a, an administrative approval done a few years ago, that said these four parking spaces on the left and on the right can be converted to boat parking. That's a ten by, ten foot wide by however long for four cars, which would accommodate four boats, maybe if they're small boats, not a twenty-six or twenty-eight foot boat, but four small boats. So let's assume they're small boats. You currently have roughly at least eight boats parked in those spots that would accommodate what we've approved for four boats. You also have two areas on the approved thing that are listed as snow storage, actually three areas that are listed as snow storage, two of which have roughly fourteen boats stored in them, not snow storage. You have a retention basin that has another six or eight boats parked on it, which means, I don't know if we're allowed to have parking on a retention basin. I, I don't know. The two places that you are proposing putting two new parking spaces, if you look at where those parking spaces are now, there's room to drive a car, not a truck, never mind a fire engine. There's room to drive a car beside your building and where those, the bows of those boats stick out. So there's no way that you're going to put two parking spaces there. You're going to eliminate any drive-through if you have parking spaces there. So I don't know, I don't see anything on this plan forward of your building, between your building and the street, that allows for any parking of boats or storage of boats other than that center island, which has seven boats on it. Now, I was there this morning. I've been there a number of times, and what I have found is that there are two parking spaces in front of your building, one of which has been occupied by a red truck always. I have no idea whose it is or whether it ever moves, but there's one. So there's one empty space there. The other times I've been there, I have found, in fact, this morning was the most recent one, that right in front of that snow storage area, crushed gravel boat display area, you had a car parked right in the middle of that area, and when he went to leave, he backed out into the street in order to leave. So I don't see where you're going to put any parking with what you have done, never mind whether what you have done is reasonable or even legal as far as zoning is concerned. You've got way too many boats stored there for what we've allowed. So I don't, I don't see what we're going to do here.
I know the situation you're talking about this morning. That was my GMC to the right. I had a boat attached.
I don't care about the GMC. I care about the car that was parked right at your entrance, which was not you. It was parked right at your entrance, and when it went to leave, the only way it could leave was it backed out into that busy highway. So, so your customers have no place to park.
Well, I think that's a very narrow-sighted analysis of what you saw at that moment, and if I can explain, I can tell you exactly what happened at that moment. I had just had my GMC on the right of the circle. I had just hooked up to a Mr. Seelow's boat, and I was taking it to his house over here by the school, and a salesman just impromptly pulled in, jumped out of his car, asked me if I was interested in something. I said no. Instead of waiting for me to go around the circle and pull out, he just scooted right out and backed out.
There was no GMC hooked up to any truck, any boat, at that point.
What time of day was it?
About nine-thirty this morning.
Nine-thirty this morning.
And there was, there was nothing in. I was able to pull in and pull around that circle. There was nothing hooked up to any boat.
Okay, that was a different situation then, I'm sorry.
Well, that may be.
Because I just, there was a guy that backed out from the other side as I was leaving, and I was like, geez, I just waited a minute, he could have gone out.
No, no, that wasn't it. This was, there was no, there was that one red truck that's always been parked in front of your building. Is that your truck?
No, that's the mechanic's truck that I talked to you about, Marcus. He's the head mechanic.
Okay.
He's my only employee.
Okay, so that truck is there. There's no other, you weren't there, obviously, because there was no other cars there.
No, I didn't get there till about ten.
That one car was parked just as you go in. And, because he had no place else to park.
Was he dropping somebody off? Was he there for, how long was he there for?
Well, I was there for about twenty minutes.
Okay.
The car was there when I got there.
Okay.
And he left shortly afterwards, so he was there for half an hour?
Sure.
My guess, and I'm just speculating here, he was walking in to talk to somebody, I have no idea who or what, but he was there for at least twenty to twenty-five minutes.
Right.
And when he left, the only way he could leave was he backed out into that highway.
Cause the circle wasn't open?
The circle was open, but he parked there, and he backed out into the, into the roadway to leave.
So, that...
So this is, this is what's going on. That's not safe, and you have no place to park them. Never mind the fact that you are parking or you are storing boats in snow storage areas, on retention basin areas that are not labeled as boat storage.
I think the reason we're here is to, you know, get these parking spots arranged and, and figure that out, and I thought we were pretty close, as of the last time I was here, uh, that we had pretty much discussed all that, and, uh, it looked like we had moved in the direction that what I had run out for, I'd like the boats, which they are now.
Why do you have boats stored in, in snow storage area and retention basins?
Well, I explained earlier that I use a snow blower to, uh, remove the snow, and I don't really need a snow storage area because I snow blow the snow in between the boats.
But it's not allowed for, for boat storage. I'm looking at your plan.
Right.
Your boat storage is that, that crushed gravel surface and behind the building, there's no boat storage in front of your building. And you've got...
Well, no, that's why we're here, that's why we're asking for storage along the sides and in the center corner of the front.
No, you're asking, you're asking for parking spaces, you're not asking for boat storage. And I'm looking at twenty-plus boats stored in front of that building that's not on your plan that's approved.
Can I turn to the chairman for a minute? I'm confused here. I'm very confused at what she's getting at, based on the meetings we've already had.
Sure. The meetings we already had, and I can address part of, one of Lynn's concerns, and that is, um, the four areas that are designated as parking spaces on each side, four on each side, eight spaces. They're actually a bit longer than the width of a car, so it's eighteen feet wide or something like that, and Nancy's approval from two thousand and nine did talk about angle parking boats in there, as long as you maintain the fourteen-foot width. So as for that area, I think at least the fire department and planning board has been satisfied that, um, that bit has, although quite crowded, has already been decided, already been administratively approved.
I have no problem with that.
The, the parts where it's labeled "snow storage," chip, uh, skip, not chip, skip, i- inside the gate and kind of to the left and right of the circle, where the plan is showing grass, I think is kind of the area that Lynn's concerned about, because your approved site plan indicates that those areas are gonna be available for snow storage and, and, or landscaping or something. And then, the space to the right of your building, which is shown in your plan as a detention basin, detention basin should be exactly that, a depression in the ground that collects rainwater and...
It is, there's no boats.
Infiltrates it. There's no boats in that area?
Yes, there are.
No, there are not.
You want the picture?
Sure. The detention area is like a hollow, you couldn't get a boat in there if you wanted.
There are boats parked angled along the side of the building, not along the...
On the paving, right?
There, to the right, so between the boats and your building, there is room for a car to go through. But on the right, there are boats parked there, which is what I'm seeing as a detention basin.
Hester, do you have the satellite picture from a couple of meetings ago? Jillian, do you have it?
My drawing is another there.
I think I had mine in my package.
There you are, there's the boats that Lynn saw, it's wrong, and I saw, I would concur, they were the two.
Pass that around. Um, do you have that, can you pass that satellite?
I must have got it somewhere.
I can't say when that satellite picture was taken, but it's a satellite picture.
Yes, sir.
Well, in fact, there, there's a classic, they're actually there.
I don't know, maybe there's a detention basin visible there? Hang on a second, I'll get you a look at it, and tell me what's going on there.
In fact, when this picture was taken, Bob, you wouldn't even get anything past the side of the building, as far as I can see.
On the left side, you're not gonna get anything by.
Well, the detention area...
I'm talking about the right side of the area.
No, you help yourself.
I think the detention area is this bit, bit here, and there's not a boat in it in this picture.
No, but there's boats alongside it, where he wants to put parking.
And those got, those, they'll have to go away, but the question is whether he's got boats in the detention area, the stormwater detention area. And it does, does not appear on this satellite picture, you wanna see one too?
No, I don't have any.
That detention area is, uh...
At least in terms of this picture. The picture that Lynn had that she took this morning does appear to have boats, although it's at ground level and it's difficult to see.
I think the boats, boats are here, they're the parking spots.
You gotta go to a microphone, sorry, I don't mean to chase you away.
No boats on the side of the building, nor is there any in the detention area, and there hasn't been, because I'm misunderstanding where the detention area is.
We'll get to the bottom of it, so here's the thing that we'll have to figure out, we're not done necessarily discussing things tonight, but...
The last time I was in, we had, we had talked about the measurements from the circle to where the tongues of the boats are, and, and the amount of space, which I went and took great time to measure as it is right now, and I gave you all the footages on there, and you guys looked at all the footages, and there was more than enough room for cars to get around, and, you know, I thought we had, almost had this thing all wrapped up, but...
And I think Lynn was, after I was just talking to, about Nancy's letter from two thousand and nine, I think we're okay with the parking in those formerly automobile spaces. But we, um, we did discuss parking on the side of the building, and suggested that the fire department would probably be okay with that, and it turns out that they're not, so that's why we've got to figure out new spaces for those. But, for detention areas, the satellite picture seems to show that there aren't any boats in there, it's hard to tell from Lynn's picture, but if there are, one way or another, when we're all done, we'll sort of make clear what is allowed and what isn't allowed, and so that you can comply with whatever those requirements are and...
There's a wooden fence along that detention area, you couldn't get through there if you tried.
It shows there's a guardrail there.
Yeah, there's a guardrail, you can't get boats on the other side of that guardrail.
If that's existing, then I would agree, it'd be hard for him to get down.
Yeah, the ones next to the building are the ones the fire department's after that says can't be there anymore, but the ones, the question about the detention area, it looks like we're okay with resolving that. Um, but either way, whether there's boats there or not, there needs to not be.
I'm, I'm just looking and saying, if I look at that drive beside your building with what's there now, there is room to get a car between the boats that are parked, whether they're on the retention basin or not, there's room to get between your building and those boats with a car.
More than enough room.
Enough room. I've got a big car. And I can get through there.
It's twenty feet from that guardrail to the side of the building.
I'm not talking guardrail, I'm talking where your boats are. Between where the boats are, if I'm gonna drive in front of a boat that's on a trailer or on blocks, there is room to get a car between the boats that are stored on the side and your building. There is not room to get a truck through, never mind a fire truck. There isn't room. You, you wanna see the picture I took this morning?
Yeah, I'd love to.
Yeah, please, come on. You nailed the picture to Jillian Lynn as well, so it's part of the record.
The intention is that those spaces that are currently occupied by boats will be employee parking.
You know what it looks like.
That was previously the intention, but I think the fire department's saying that that won't, that still won't.
I'm talking between the building, and these boats that are parked here. There, there's room to get a car through, that's it.
Yes, there's definitely more than enough room to get out, I've, I've taken boats ten feet wide.
I don't mean to chase you back to the microphone, but nobody at home can hear you.
I've taken boats ten feet wide through there every day, uh, if not wider.
Ten feet wide is fine, that's not gonna take a fire truck through there.
Fire truck is not ten feet wide.
No, but they want twenty feet minimum.
Right, no, right.
So, here's the thing with respect to that, um, from the guardrail to the building and that section next to the building, where we had been talking about two, putting two parking spaces, the fire department's telling us that those not only can't be the fires, that they can't be the parking spaces, you also can't have boats there.
Right.
And now they did talk about specifically at night versus during the day.
Sure.
So if you're hustling around and moving things and coming and going, that's one thing, but nighttime, from the guardrail to the building, on that side of the building, it's gotta stay clear. The fourteen feet throughout the loop is what the fire department was talking about before, is what they needed to get by and get in. And if we make some parking spaces to accommodate the couple that you need in that last couple of boat spots,
Yeah.
there needs to be enough room that the fire department's satisfied that they're gonna get past that too, to get to the building, and since that's closer to the building, I don't know if that's one of the areas where they feel like they need more than fourteen, or whether fourteen will satisfy them. So far, their communication to us has been that they hadn't objected to those boats being there the way they are.
Right.
The ones that are angle parked over on the side of the lot, they do and have continued to object to the ones that are between the guardrail and the building.
Yeah, the, the ones she's talking about are, you know, you've, you've, you've got the, you've got the building right here, and, uh, th- those boats are right there, and she's worried about the space between the edge of the building and where those boats are parked, but the boats are actually in front of the building. But it, it's, I'm not gonna lie, it's, it's narrow through there, but it's definitely passable.
Okay, so is, here's, here's sort of the big picture. We need four parking spaces that don't interfere with anything the fire department needs in terms of space.
I will go to them.
Um, and so the, the ones that we talked about next to these guardrail that we thought would be okay, are not gonna be okay, you gotta get some other location that works for them. If those end up being these other couple down here or somewhere else on the site, wherever you can make them work with, with them, um, that's what we need. Once they're established, they need to actually be automobiles that move and are customers and are available to be used, and not, you know, a truck we want to restore someday or something like that, that's basically permanently stored there.
Bob?
Finney? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, you had just said that four spaces, now, Skip has just said that he works there. He's got one employee that works in, for the marine, for sure, and he's got one subcontractor that works there, so is this board okay with one additional space?
The, the subcontractor situation's gotta go away. Otherwise, other than that, we're using the parking table
Okay.
to determine
Gotcha.
what's required of the, of the lot. Now, I, I grant you, he could have six employees there that are working on boats, and four is still the number that the parking regulation requires of them, so...
Right, but he, but he's told us that, you know, he pretty, he pretty much manages with himself and one full-time employee or whatever to do the work that he has to get done.
I did get permission from S and J Motors to have any of my contractors or employees park in their lot, uh, right down the street, uh, they have space out back, so occasionally, they have allowed us, if the yard's been full, to have my guys park down there. Nothing in writing or anything, it was just a courtesy when we had a little bit of overflow, and I said, you know, we have a relationship with them, and, uh, they allowed us to park the cars, so it's to keep everything clear. The, a guy that, uh, is the upholsterer, has no driver's license, he hasn't had one in over two years, I don't know if he'll ever get it back, so he usually gets dropped off by a taxi, so that's why there's no need for a parking spot for him.
All right, understood. Um, in terms of parking at your neighbor, S and J Motors or whoever it is that would allow you to do that, um, it definitely helps in terms of keeping those spaces available for employees. We don't count them in your account unless you've got some formal agreement with them that gives you a guaranteed right to those spaces. Um, but, I think in terms of managing your customer flow and your business, I think it's a great idea, I mean, support it a hundred percent. Finney, does that kind of cover mostly?
Let the conversation go to Lynn.
Lynn, you had...
You've got five boats parked, stored in front of your building on the southern side of your building. If, as you face the building, you've got boats stored in, it, your building is a little bit back set. If you removed those boats, you would have plenty of parking spaces. Just a suggestion.
Isn't that where the bay doors are for your building?
Yep. And the bay doors aren't accessible, cause he's got five boats stored there.
Yeah, one of those boats, uh, I took today, like I said, I cleared one of, I cleared the boats out in front of the bay today to get it to the person's address with the snowstorm that hit, I said I could wait a couple of days before I brought it up to his house.
All five of them?
Today was the day. No, no, not just, just one, that was right in the very middle, that was blocking the access to bay doors.
There's five there that are preventing you from getting access to the base.
There's one to the right and one to the left, and then there's all the ones along the side.
And then there's, and then there's two in front of them.
So, hope point is, if you wanted to use that area for parking and you could get those boats out of there, and you want to strike those spaces for parking,
Yeah.
that could satisfy what you need to get done?
Yeah, we, maybe we'll move it to the left side, so that the, you know, like I said, I'll talk to the fire department and we'll, you know, take some of the spots there.
You've got an overhead door on the side of the building that you actually use for bringing stuff in and out of your building, right?
Pardon me now.
You've got an overhead door on the side of the building, on the north side of your building?
We have a overhead door in the rear.
In the rear.
The sides and the front, so that there's in-and-out access everywhere.
Okay, so those front ones just are ones that you don't use very often?
Typically, projects in there could be there for months, yeah, so...
Understood.
All right. I did remember, okay. On this plan, this is a plan that you made some changes to, this was your original, you made, the one that I have in front of me.
Yes.
What I do not see, and it could just be the way it photocopied, but note six. Proposed onsite parking includes one handicap space, but I don't see anything that indicates how many spaces you're agreeing to.
Four, I believe, was what I was told.
It's not, it's not on here. It's gotta be on the plan, you have to make a note on the plan, how much, I mean, all plans indicate how much parking is available.
Do you know if that's in there, Jillian? About the, well, I thought I changed those spots.
I think it's just a bad photocopy.
Okay.
Where would it say?
It would say it right after proposed onsite parking, and then it would be the number.
Jillian, your microphone's not on.
Sorry, it would say it right after proposed onsite parking, there should be a number.
There should be a number four?
Photocopy, yeah.
Okay, plus, and that includes the one handicap space?
Yeah, I believe I got, that's when you said that, I was like, jeez, I cut a swerve, I wrote that in there.
It's not, you cannot read it.
I understand.
No, it looks actually like it used to say ten and somebody was...
Got rid of the ten, but didn't put a number in.
Yeah, to make the change, but it didn't quite get the change in there.
So that's, that's just a housekeeping issue, you wanna make sure it's on there. The second thing I see on this plan are these hashed boat shapes in front of the garage doors, and one in front of the crushed gravel display area between that and there. That was not on the original plan. I understand the parking of the boat by the crushed gravel display area between that and the building, I got it. But why do I see the two hash marks that were not on the original plan in front of the building, on those two doors?
You're talking about the top of the circle?
Nope, I'm talking right next to your building.
North side, two forward.
North side of the building. Next, right across from the detention area.
That's the two parking spots, right, that we...
No, 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 this is two pictures of two boat shapes right in front of the door in the building.
Oh, just, just to display that, you know, during the daytime, when we back a boat up to the bay to run the outboard motor, and we open up the bay door, cause that's the mechanical shop right there, you know, he would, you know, run his, because we run the motors outside, so that's the whole idea of the bay door, is you run the motors outside, and you're right there at your...
Let's, let's get rid of those hash marks.
Okay, gotcha.
We understand that during the day, you may be putting boats there to do things, move them around, do the test running the engines and all that stuff. When you draw those outlines, it looks like you designated it as boat storage areas.
I got you, no, I was just kinda demonstrating how things operate during the daytime, and, you know, that we understand to keep it clear during the night, but, you know, during the day, you know, we bring them up to the bays to work on them, run them, and then, you know, put them where they gotta go at night.
Sounds good, let's erase them.
So, so that being said, the one in front of the, between the crushed gravel boat display area and the handicap parking space, what is that?
That's at the top of the circle?
Yeah, the boat, the boat shape at the top of the circles.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, that's a drop-off spot, I don't throw that, cause people come into the circle, they'll drop it down there.
Sorry.
People will drop their boats right there, and then we come and grab it with the fork truck, it's kind of like valet parking, they, that way they don't have to do anything, they just pull in, drop their boat right there, then we take the fork truck and put it in the appropriate spot, so that's a drop-off spot.
Can you indicate that on the plan?
Sure.
And that way, when the fire department looks at it, they can say, okay, that's okay, as well, make sure it's indicated?
Yep.
I mean, that's what the plan is all about. The day that you had this drawn up and it was done originally, this was your agreement, and now it's been changed, and you're, once you start making changes, anything that is changed
Right.
needs to be noted somewhere on the plan.
Okay.
You know, an arrow, a big note, so there's no question.
Yep.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So, in that same regard, when you get to, uh, uh, some additional changes to the plans, if immediately inside your fence off of Daniel Webster Highway to the right and the left, where it says "proposed snow area" on the left, and it doesn't have any indication of what it does on the right, other than landscaping, if you want to store boats there, indicate so on this plan, so that we know that's what we're approving.
Can I approach the bench so you can show me?
Absolutely. Here, and here. I think there's been boats there.
There are boats, there are boats.
These are my, this is the, this dotted line here is what I do.
No, I get it, I don't mean to cut you off from talking while you're up here.
Yeah, the dotted lines there are what I proposed as the storage area, and we talked about the snow, uh, storage areas, uh, before, and I indicated that, you know, the one on the side of the building, uh, you know, which we never put the snow there anyways, uh, you know, we just don't, can't use a snowplow there.
No, you've talked about that before, and I'm...
We put the snow throughout the lot between the boats, because I have to hand carve it with a snow blower.
Yeah, you talked about that before, I understand it, and I trust you to manage your business in, in that regard just fine, as long as you've got fourteen...
I have had a snowplow clear the windrows at the end, but there are no boats there, was we know that that's gonna be kept clear, and... And, you know, obviously, you know, if you've got to clear your windrow and you put the snow someplace.
Fair enough. So, make those changes to the plan so that if you plan to put boats there, it says so.
Okay.
And if it's a place where we've said you can't put any boats, it says so. In fact, I wouldn't mind if you drew in your angle parking boats in those four parking spaces on the left and the right that you've been administratively approved of.
Okay, I believe I did put boat storage over to the right with a line drawing to that area where it's enclosed with my.
It says customer boat parking, but it doesn't indicate whether you're parallel parking them the way the cars were supposed to be approved or whether you're angle parking them the way that the letter with Nancy Larson approved says.
And part of the reason I didn't do that is because the boats are so many different sizes that, you know, I just wanted that area to be utilized for boat storage. I mean, yeah, they're going to be angled, but.
No question, but I'm trying to save you a headache in the future.
Yeah, okay.
You want the plan to show what you're doing.
All right.
If you're doing stuff that the plan doesn't show, then you're.
Are they going to hold me to a certain amount of spots if I do that?
We'll make a note and we'll fix that up.
You know, that's what I'm worried about. That's why I didn't want to put lines.
Yeah. We can get over that obstacle one way or another with a note.
However.
What you don't want is something that shows something that you're not doing.
The close, between that area and the street, there is no boat storage listed. And there are quite a few boats stored there. So, we either need to approve that
No.
or we need to get those boats out of there.
So, there's two areas that we've, that we're dealing with here. We've told him at our previous meeting that outside of his fence, zero boats to the road.
And there are no boats outside of his fence. His fence is a lot closer to the street than what is indicated here. But, all the boats are inside the fence.
And then, that area that's inside the fence that is on the plan indicated to be landscaped area, proposed snow storage area
Right.
is what I was just talking to him about. Either use it for what is on this plan or draw boats on this and tell me that's what you're going to do and we can consider what to do with it.
Well, I think there's two different things here. There's the spaces that were administratively approved as boat storage instead of parking. And there are those spaces, there's the space between that administrative approval area and the street that shows no boats, no boat storage, but that have a significant number of boats stored there.
He's got to mark, change the plans to indicate.
So, we either change the plans or, and come for approval on that or get the boats out of there.
Yeah, that's it, exactly. The ones that were administratively approved is water under the bridge and since it was eight years ago, I don't think we're doing that anymore.
And that's fine. I have no problem with those.
But, in terms of the ones that you're talking about in the area that's not parking spaces but has boats on it, we need a plan that shows that that's for boat storage and not for proposed snow storage and not landscaped area. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I thought I had done that, other than we moved the snow a little apart.
Nope.
With my dotted lines.
Nope.
No? Not really.
No.
I mean, you may have meant for us to understand it that way, but let's make it a little bit clearer.
Approach you one more time and just make sure we're talking about the same thing?
The same thing I circled last time. So, there's two areas to the side inside the gate, right and left of your gate.
Just as you go in the gate, to the right and to the left before the four parking spaces that were administratively approved for storage.
My only point being is you indicate the parking spots that were there before with dotted lines, okay? With the cars, you know, when they're along the side here like that.
They're right here.
Yeah, that's the woods. That's the woods right there.
Those are the parts where you want.
Okay, yeah, you're right. They're right here. They're right here. Okay, so what I did was I used the exact same nomenclature to design these dotted lines, which goes, you know, all the way around.
I understand. Okay, let me get you back to your microphone. I understand what you're saying, that you were trying to copy what was done on the plan a little bit earlier and it doesn't clearly represent what you're trying to do. So, we want to show those a little bit differently.
Okay.
In that area, along the sides of the circle, where the four spaces that used to be for cars that are now for boats that have been administratively approved, draw those as angle parking. We can include a note that says as many boats that fit, whatever, as long as you keep your 14-foot aisle width, whatever nomenclature we want so that you're not jammed up on numbers. The area that's towards the street from there, that's on both sides, which on this plan appears intended to be grass area or landscaped or proposed snow storage or something, on our plan shouldn't have anything parked on it. If you want to use it for boats, then draw it on the plan. If you don't want to do that, then get rid of the boats. Do what's in the plan. And that way, what we've got altogether here, when we've got the parking that you need from the fire department and the widths and the boats lined up and all of that stuff, every person that picks up this plan could use it to decide whether that's what you're doing in real life and does it fit and does it work and is it approved? So, at the end of the day, we've got a plan that works. It's for one business. It's not for upholstery and motorcycle business, but just for a boat business. And this is the way that the property's going to be used. Does that work?
Yep.
That's what we're ultimately going to aim for.
Bob?
Yes.
And if you're drawing in boat storage in what's labeled here as snow storage area and landscaping, I would suggest that you get rid of a few of the boats that are closest to the street because I have a sightline distance problem with pulling out of your space as well as the space to the, to the south that when you've got that many big boats stored that close to the street, I have a sightline problem. So, you've got too many boats too close to the street. So, back them up.
Too many big boats? Put the small ones down.
Well, you can't define.
You remember how we were going to bring the landscaping?
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just saying I've got a sightline distance problem with what you've got there now.
No, I understand that. It's just that prior, there were large trees there that, you know, was approved on the first time we went through this.
Yeah, well, we were here before John Seer, who owns the Battery Place next door, was saying that his sightline, the issue with his sightline wasn't the boats that are behind the gate, but there are a couple of trees and bushes that we've managed to figure out how to work through.
I didn't, there's a couple of trees and bushes there that I don't see as a problem, but the trees and bushes that are there, there are boats between where they are and the street. And there's some big ones that are presenting a sightline issue currently.
Outside the fence? I mean, I know the fence is closer to the street than this, but.
Yep. They're right up against the fence.
It was 28 or 29 feet or something like that.
They're right up against the fence. Yep, and they're, you've got a sightline issue.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the wheels, the boats are on little trolleys and the little trolleys are behind the fence, but the boats hang way out into this, beyond the fence, if you will, into the setback area that we were trying to maintain. Okay, that's.
Over the top of it.
Yeah, some of them huge bows.
The fence is here and the boats are all there. They're not hanging over the fence.
But, they are hanging out.
But, they're up against that fence so that if you're coming out of Skip's place or the Battery Place, those boats are so close to the street because the fence that's shown here is a lot closer to the street.
You bet it is.
Than, than what's indicated on the plan. And so, pulling out of either of those driveways, you've got boats that are sitting like this. So, you've got a sight issue.
Okay.
So, those boats have got to come back off that fence.
I haven't been out to Skip's to put eyes on it. I trust what you're saying. I thought we had that worked out when we had John in here, but if we don't, since it appears that Skip's got to go meet with the fire department and figure out his parking again between now and whenever we hear him again, I think we can all have an opportunity to go take a look.
Yep, so can I interject though? I mean, when you go to pull out onto the road, I have my gate that's going to be closed at night and all the boats are behind that gate.
That is correct.
Correct, all right. So, why would you stop at the gate to look for cars coming both ways? You would never do that. You would go beyond the gate and there are no boats there to the left and right as you go to pull out. I don't see how that's a sightline problem and you've got S&amp;J Motors here. They're right on the sidewalk right here, you know, all lined up. I mean, mine are way, way back. There's not an issue with seeing cars as you pull. You don't even get to, get to the sidewalk and you can see left and right.
Your boats are a lot taller than the cars that are parked at S&amp;J Motors.
True, but they're a lot further back too.
No, they're not.
I can show you right here on this.
I, I just looked this morning.
Mr. Chairman.
What is that?
Could you have them address the chair, please?
Yeah. Skip, this is a, I can't resolve the difference in what people's opinions are with this.
I think you need to have some other people go down there and take a look because I think there's a differing opinion of what real sightline safety really is all about, in my opinion. I think you need to have more than one person take a look at that.
I understand. That's what I just said. Between now and our next meeting, whichever planning board members would like to go down there and have a look. And I'll go take a look myself and we'll kind of get a sense of things.
That'd be great.
I did think that this was an issue that we had behind us, but if it isn't, then we'll have to talk about it some more. But, sitting here in the room and having not been out to your site, there's nothing I can do to resolve the differences.
No, I understand. It's just a little mind boggling to me at the moment.
What's that?
It's just a little mind boggling to me at the moment.
I know that you've been before a handful of times and you're probably not enjoying the idea of coming back again.
No, I know. I enjoy that part of it. It's just, I just thought that we had already got some things taken care of and set and I feel like we're going backwards to some degree as we've tried to move ahead and for whatever reason. But, I think just a review by someone else might be helpful, that's all.
I think we'll get a chance to do that. So, what we need to accomplish, Jillian, from here is to satisfy this parking situation, get some location on some parking spaces that satisfy the fire department.
Yep.
And then, between now and then, we'll all get a chance to take a look at what the sightlines look like. Vinnie?
I have a question for Jillian. On the original plan before it was changed with his changes. Okay, I'm big on plans.
Yep.
You know, they say what they say.
It's understood.
And right now, Note Three says, "The purpose of the plan is to reconfigure boat parking for commercial boat sales and storage." That is not the purpose of the plan. That's what you're trying to do. You're making some amendments to the plan. What was the original? Because that really needs to go back. You can make amendments to the plan all you want. You don't have to change it. That's not the purpose of the plan. That's the purpose of the reason why you're here, is you need more storage. So, if that plan includes storage, then that needs to go back to what it was. Again, I'm big on detail on what was there because I don't like it when something's removed because that was the original intent of the board and you and your engineer when you first came to the board. So, when you start making changes on notes, typically you don't change notes. You may make a strike.
Okay.
Okay, and then you add a note, but you don't change notes.
Okay, so get rid of the note, rewrite the note.
Put things back. I would get the original plan again, start over. Okay, I mean, I can appreciate not having to go back to your engineer. It's expensive. I get it. Okay, and we're trying not to do a full site plan.
I understand.
A change here, you know, that's why, that's why we're here.
Trying to accommodate a business that's been there for 14 years, operating quite nicely. That's what, I think I hope it is.
For whatever, you know, it works for you, but apparently it doesn't work for some people and that's why you're here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, so, yeah, that would be my recommendation is, you know, I can see adding notes. Adding notes, that's perfectly fine. Makes all the sense in the world. Striking notes or changing, whiting them out is not really a good way to go about this because then we lose the original intent of the board 14 years ago. I have a problem with that.
I know how you feel. Let's talk about that one a little bit. He didn't change the note on the plan that was approved however many years ago. It still reads what it read and that's what its purpose was 10 years ago or 20 years ago.
Excuse me, Note Number Three, "The purpose of the plan is to," and if you take out what he wrote for, then you finish it with, "For a commercial boat sales service storage facility." Something was removed and changed.
Yes.
Okay, and I don't know what it was.
Okay, but timeout for a second. The one that's been recorded and approved 10 or 15 years ago still says what it says. It was the original site plan for a boatyard, whatever the note was. He didn't change that. You can't change that. It's recorded registry of deeds. His purpose before us here today is the purpose that's written on this plan, which is, I think, why he did that and he might have probably was told to do that by the department because he's not looking for the original approval for a boatyard today. He's looking to reconfigure his parking, which is why he changed that note. So, although you could disagree with what he did, I think that it's, it's a fair approach to what he's doing here. He's not looking for a site plan approval for a boatyard. He's looking to amend a site plan to reconfigure some parking.
And again, once you amend a site plan, okay, yes, there's the original, but now we have two plans. We have the amended plan and we have the original plan. Now, typically, as we all know, the amended plan doesn't necessarily get rerecorded. That's not generally done, but it goes into a file.
Right, it wouldn't be recorded. It would just be on file in the community department.
It would be on file. Okay. And I'm okay, like I said, I'm okay with it, but as a, as a, as a planning board member, when I say I'd like to see the plan, right now, what I have is half. I don't have the whole thing in front of me, so I can't make, it's very difficult for me to make a decision on what he's looking to change if I don't know what was there originally. So, I don't know which way to go with my decision.
I'll just state that it said it was to construct a 4,120-square-foot building for a commercial boat sales service and storage facility.
Okay, so again.
See, but if that's what his plan said here tonight, that would be incorrect because he's not looking to construct a 4,100-square-foot building.
No, he's looking to amend it and I get the amendment, but this is, this is an amended plan.
On a lot of the plan, I agree with you 100% in terms of some of the pictures and the notes and things like that. I'm just not quite with you on that one. But, on some of the substantive, like showing the number of parking spaces and where they are and that the plan has to be what the plan has to be, I think that you're, couldn't be more right. I just can't quite get all upset about changing the purpose of the plan to reflect what he's here for tonight.
Mr. Christensen's correct about some of the boats on that. They'd be, as you enter, they'd be on your right. There are some large boats with shrink wrap on them. And one of the reasons I put those boats on that side was to make sure that the lower-profile boats were on the other side so as John would hopefully be satisfied with the fact that his building could be seen. And I've taken great efforts to only put small boats on that side just to try to be a good neighbor, you know, because I know that he wants people to be able to see his lot. But, prior to that, there were giant pine trees that I allowed him to take down that would have blocked it anyways, which I allowed him to move. But, you know, if we put the pine trees back and I hadn't allowed that, this boat thing wouldn't be an issue because it'd be huge giant pine trees that's been around on both sides of the lot, but we took them down to accommodate everything.
Skip, if you move the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, the six boats on the south side, closest to the Battery Place, that are closest to your building and you put those boats closest to the street instead of the big ones that are close to the street, I wouldn't have a problem with sightline. You've got big ones close to the street. You've got small ones. I'm talking 16, 18, not even 18, 14, 16 footers. Little runabouts that are close to the building. If you put those close to the street, I have no problem with sightline. But, when you've got a 24, 26 footer with a cuddy, that's a sightline issue. So, if you swapped those boats, I wouldn't have a problem.
I understand what you're saying.
Let's talk about what the best way to proceed is because I think that we've got a bunch of issues going in a whole bunch of different directions and somehow we need to summarize how we get from here to wherever we're going to end up. We want to have some changes to the plans to show that parking the way that we talked about. I'm not sure what to tell you to do with the notes that Vinnie's talking about because, Jillian, what's the department's position in terms of that kind of thing?
We could work with the language and just have it say to amend the original site plan approval in order to reconfigure boat parking, storage areas or something of that nature.
Would that clarify?
And then, just make some changes on the original plan, not changing the original notes, but just making the adding the notes. I mean, to me, that's clean and it's not the one that's recorded, but that's clean.
We can just add rather than whiting out the original notes.
I wouldn't have any, losing sleep over one way or another. I wouldn't have any...losing sleep over one way or another. So if that makes you happy, I'm with you. We're there. Need to meet with the fire department. Need to find out where your parking spaces are going to be. You might have to rearrange some boats to do some things. In between meetings, we'll all get a chance, or those of us that choose to, will get a chance to go have a look themselves and see what the situation is with sightline distances. Is there anything that I missed in terms of what we would need to accomplish between now and the next time we come together? What's the will of the board with respect to action tonight?
Mr. Chairman, we obviously can't approve anything, and looking at the calendar, the closing date for March, the seventh meeting is effectively gone. It was Valentine's Day. You could, if you can get it all done by the end of next week, or middle of next week, probably 28th, you could go to the March 21st meeting, but my recommendation would be that we went to March the 4th, we went to the April 4th meeting, which would give Mr. Moore time to get everything cleaned up, get Mr. Manwale on his side, and that would mean he's got till March the 14th to actually submit everything. So I would make a motion that we continue this matter to March, till April the 4th in this room at 7:30 PM with no further notification to a butters.
Motion a second to continue. Jillian?
Just note that the clock ends on April 3rd.
Sorry?
Current expiration date is April 3rd.
Oh. Well, we would have to include that, a request that Mr. Moore gives us, extends his waiting day period to give us the extra few days.
We'll address both of those things, but let me ask Jillian a question. On some of these dates for submission of materials ahead of meetings, it seems to me from our experience that that's kind of the date to submit an application, and that applicants are pretty frequently augmenting stuff later than those dates in order to send those out. So if we're planning on a date for him to come back before us, should we be using these cutoff dates to make a decision, or is there a different date or way to think about the timeline?
I think it makes sense to use the cutoff dates for the applications, just so that everybody gets all the information for them and in their packets.
Okay.
It makes it a lot cleaner for us in the office.
Okay. So Skip, what all that means is that the next available meeting date for which you have time to get on the agenda would put you at the second April meeting?
Both of them. First April meeting.
Our first April meeting, April 4th. Now, you have previously given us an extension of time to make a decision on your approval because the statute says we've got to make a decision in 65 days. That has been extended to April 3rd, and you'd be here on April 4th if we had you here next time. So in order to do all of that, you would have to give us permission to extend those dates further. If you didn't want to do that or didn't choose to do that, I don't know if it's possible to get on any of the March dates, but you'd probably end up, if you couldn't do that, compelling us to make a decision here tonight, which is probably not the best idea. What are your thoughts about that?
Well, I would love to try to be here for the March 21st date if I could do it, but I mean, if that is something that you feel uncomfortable with, then I will file an extension for the April 4th.
When is his deadline for the March 21st meeting?
March 21st will be February 28th, which is Tuesday next week.
It's a week from now, so you would have to get all of your meetings with the fire marshal and your submitted plans done in a week.
Right.
If you do that, you get on that March meeting.
For the 21st?
For the 21st of March.
I see.
If you don't get your stuff together and we've continued you to March, then we wouldn't be able to continue you past March because you haven't given us an extension to the next meeting date. So that sort of puts us in that position. So it's generally advisable and to your benefit to consider granting those extensions, because if you don't, you put the board in a position where we've got to make a decision here tonight, and as you've heard, we all want some different information and some different things, so...
I understand. So I would probably put in for an extension and go for the April 4th.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're comfortable with extending the deadline? Jillian, do we need anything in writing, or is that sufficient?
That should be sufficient.
Okay. With that, we have a motion and a second, properly seconded to table this matter until April 4th at this time in this place with no further notice to a butters.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion on the continuance? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0. Thank you, Skip.
Thank you very much.
Come and present to us the information. Item four on our agenda tonight. You having fun, Paul? Glad you joined us. Brett W. Vaughn as the applicant and Farrelly Family Revocable Trust as the owner, review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a lot line adjustment between three existing lots and subdivision plan, resulting in a total of four residential lots. The parcels are located at Wilson Hill Road and the R1 Residential and Aqua Conservation Districts and Flood Hazard Conservation District, tax map 4A, Lot 3422. The agenda item is continued from our February 7th, 2017 meeting. Jillian, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, they are proposing to revise the lot lines of the existing lots and then proposing to subdivide map 4A, Lot 22 afterward, resulting in four new residential lots. We did receive revised set of plans that complies with lot and yard requirements for R1 Residential District by map, and staff notes that there's an existing barn on the proposed lot line for lots 4A22 and 4A22-1 that would need either relief or removal. There are also some sightline issues that were brought up in the previous staff memo, and it's our understanding that they are working with Public Works to show that those meet the requirements of the Public Works Department, and I believe they should present some sightline profiles tonight discussing that.
Thank you, Jillian. I also want to note that there's a memo that's been placed for everyone to have from our town engineer, Dawn Tuamala, expressing the Department of Public Works position regarding some of these issues, including an indication that they did take a look at the driveway locations today, and they're consistent with the plans, and as indicated on the profile sheet, when the driveways are constructed, there'll need to be several trees taken down, and it should be reviewed again just prior to the actual construction. And then all of the other issues from the department are in that memo. Jillian, is the correspondence that I have from Mr. Martin one that's been shared with everybody? Is that just me?
Just you for now, in order to be read into the record.
Okay. So at the right time, we'll take a look at this in a little bit more detail, but I have a correspondence from a butter named Michael Martin who has some concerns about the project and wanted to have those brought to the board's attention, even though he couldn't be here tonight. So when we get to a chance to the point of looking at public discussion, I'll read more of that in some greater detail. And with that, I know you're not Mr. Vaughn, because he is, introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Chris Geida. I'm a certified wetland scientist and soil scientist with Fieldstone and Consultants, representing Mr. Vaughn tonight. So this colorful plan here indicates that it's a part of the lot line adjustment that we're proposing in order to do the minor subdivision. There's a number of irregular lots to begin with, and we're reconfiguring some of them to gain the appropriate acreage required for the R1 zoning that, since we revised the plans from the last seminal, as well as provide some additional land to some of the butters at their request. The orange areas, there's basically three lots in question, the large, the orange one, the green, and the pink. The hatched areas are the areas that are being transferred. So the orange one, the hatched areas are being transferred to the orange lot, and likewise with the green. The pink lot is basically just having some of the area taken away from the pink lot and going to the orange. Those are all outlined on this table here on the plan. It gets a little bit complicated and put everybody to sleep on the number of lots and what's getting switched, but other than that, it's fairly straightforward.
So can you bring back that first one again? Let's just review what's the same and what's changing. So 4A3 is the pink one on your plan. That's staying basically the same, correct? In its configuration?
Yeah.
There's one over there you could pick up and walk with. Those things are hazard. They do that all the time.
So this parcel E used to be part of 4A3, the pink lot.
Okay, so that orange hatched area used to be part of pink, now it's going to be part of orange.
That's correct.
And the green one in the middle is picking up those two little triangles?
Correct.
And that other orange hatched area on the right is coming from what used to be part of the green one?
Correct.
Okay, now, how do we end up with four lots? I count three.
So this is the lot line adjustment, so the actual area that's going to be subdivided is the green lot.
Okay. So what was the purpose of moving that big chunk of orange from the pink lot to the orange lot? It's basically the back lot, so to speak. What did you accomplish by doing that?
That? You want to speak to that?
I've been over this so much. So what's happening is this is Farrell's lot. He was interested in this piece of property.
I got to get you closer to a microphone. You're not getting picked up.
I'm sorry. He was interested in this piece of property and this piece of property to add to his lot.
Okay.
And basically what I was asking him for is this section down here, which allows us to have the 100,000 contiguous and meet the zoning.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah.
So the people that own the property are interested in doing it that way. I got you. Okay, so please proceed with your presentation. Flip the page. Go where you want to go. I'm with you so far.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll come back to it, I guess.
Oh, you have questions on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, please. Let's have it. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Okay, I wanted to talk about Lot 4A5-1 and why it's not shown as a separate lot. Or it seems to be shown with a different boundary line. That's the little green triangle, left of the green triangle, left of that.
Michael Martin's lot, yes.
That lot.
That's a separate lot. It's not involved in the subdivision.
Understood. Why is its boundary line broken instead of solid line?
And there's a house on that lot, too.
Correct.
Which isn't shown.
Right, on this plan, right.
On any of the plans you've submitted, but go ahead.
I'm not really following the question.
Okay, the question is, why is the lot line boundary of that lot, I'm talking about Lot 4A51, the boundary line to the left of that is not shown in the same way, with the same type of marking as the rest of the boundary line?
Why's the dotted line?
Because this is in a butters lot line, so that dash line is to indicate in a butters line, which is not part of the parcel. So these heavy lines are the parcels that are involved in the proposal.
Okay, the ones across the street, on the other hand, are shown heavy in some cases.
Well, if it's heavy, then it's simply a matter of the type of line, and it's not long enough, so the computer basically generates the line type. It needs a certain length. So if you look over here, you'll see that these are dashed, and this one is not, but it actually is. It's just outside of the print zone of the computer, so...
And why was the house not shown? Was there a reason for that? There's a house on that lot.
I am not sure.
I am sure.
No, I'm not sure why it's not shown.
Oh, okay, okay.
That could be an error. It could be.
Okay, that's why I'm asking the question.
Probably wasn't any room for all the words.
Okay, that's my question.
We can certainly make that correction easy enough.
I think it'd be a good idea.
Okay, so, moving on, this is the green lot itself at a somewhat larger scale, so that we can see a little bit better here. The blue is the proposed lot lines. The perimeter goes around the outside as it was shown on the previous green lot here. The blue circles are the proposed well locations. The yellow highlighter is the proposed septic locations, the 4K areas. The green is the wetland areas on the lot. So they're all frontage lots with the appropriate 250 feet of frontage, which was revised from the previous one to R1 zoning. There's a little bit of a strange configuration here, essentially to gain the acreage necessary to meet the town's requirements for the 100,000 square feet. They meet the regulations. The houses are going to be up in the front areas. Although these areas are narrow in the back, nobody's really going to see those lines on the ground. So the short answer is that they meet the regulations to the town, to the best of our understanding.
Is your green hatched area on that one wetlands?
Yes, it is, sir. And this abuts back up to, the golf course is back in here.
Springfield Circle. Quite a ways, but through all the wetland.
There's a wetland in between, yeah.
There's, yeah, it's quite a big chunk.
Yeah.
So any questions on this sheet before we move to that?
Not for me.
Septic tank, I mean, sorry.
The charters?
Test pits. Were test pits done on all lots?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, right here in the side, the yellow areas and the kind of target-looking symbol is the test pit location.
Have they all been approved, or they...
Yes, witnessed by the town, correct.
No, I mean, they have to be approved by the state, right?
Oh, yeah. No, no, no. We haven't submitted to the state subdivision. Typically, we'll do that after we get local approval in case there's any changes that the board would like to see.
Anything else that you want to go over, present?
Not on this sheet just yet. We can always come back. We talked a little bit about sight distance. So these are the sight distance profiles. They do meet the requirements, the 30 mile an hour zone out here, which is a 200-foot sight distance requirement. In discussion with the DPW and Dawn, she suggested that we design it for 40 miles an hour, which basically is 305 feet. So these pink lines are 305 feet sight distances for each lot here, 22, 22-1, and the others are the same. Essentially, they all meet the sight distance. In Dawn's letter, you'll notice there is a couple of instances where there may be some trees in the way and some stone walls. Some of the stone walls out here have a large, I don't know what you want to call it. I call it a beehive type of thing, where like an ornamental thing on the edge, that might need to be regraded a little bit there to make the sight distance. But all those things are, we don't have any objection to her letter or her comments.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Looks the same.
The one, you talked about the trees. There's that large sycamore. How does that affect...
That is same. This is the large sycamore right here, so that is not in the sight distance, and we are proposing to leave that existing. It's kind of a landmark there that I think everybody likes, including Brett.
Second biggest.
Not quite the biggest.
It's the second. I think yours was third. I don't know. Is there a second or third? The other one's in Merrimack, too.
Okay, you wanted to flip the page and show something on the next one?
No, I just wanted to show that it looks the same as the other one, but it's not. Just the two other different lots.
The other two driveways?
Yeah.
Were those sight distances determined in the field, or were they determined on paper from your map?
Both. They're in the field, and these locations have been staked and measured in the field for those distances.
For all four?
That's correct.
All four?
Yep. So as far as the board's letter, we can go down that a little bit, because some of the revisions that were made from the previous plan, most of them were fairly minor. I think it had to do with, the largest one was the lot configuration and the acreage based on the R1 zoning, so that's been resolved.
Let's take care of a little bit of the board's business. What's the, does the board have any other questions with respect to addressing the question about whether we have a complete application prepared for our review?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept this for review, that we have the full details, enable us to make a considered opinion.
Motion a second to determine the application's complete. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 for a complete application. Now, you've asked for a sidewalk waiver, and there was another waiver in here. Didn't you have another sec...oh, sidewalk the only thing that you're looking for waiver?
Sidewalk, yeah.
Okay. You want to address that? I know that you've got a written letter that you've... Um, you want to address that, I know that you've got a written letter that you provided.
Sure, um, the, obviously the purpose of a sidewalk is to, to give, give access to pedestrians along the way. Wilson Hill Road has no sidewalks as it is, um, and there's no potential really for, um, commercial development or the need for sidewalks in the future anywhere near that area. So we're requesting for the board to, to waive that requirement in this situation.
Would have any questions about the request for waiver? What's the will of the board, oh, sorry, Mike, go ahead.
That, certainly this whole section is a kind of a windy spot. It's used by lots of, uh, folks for recreational activities, exercise mostly. A lot of cyclists, a lot of runners. Is there anything that you've done to the road, uh, that would provide, you know, that kind of support for those folks? That a sidewalk would do, in other words?
Yep.
It's not being provided by the waiver.
Yeah, um, previously, if, uh, members of the board, if they recall, um, there was some, a subdivision by Brett, uh, adjacent to here. And, basically the town requested an additional easement of right of way, extending that easement, uh, five foot, so that there's twenty-five feet from the center line of the road to the right of way. So that, that easement is basically being continued, um, across these lots as well. On this end, it actually jumps out to ten feet, because of the way the road kind of turns in order to get that twenty-five feet. Um, there's a little bit more land here to provide for a widening of the right of way.
So, so the right, the right of way will be widened, but the road itself and its limits and its current configuration, will there be any changes?
Not proposed at this time, no.
Yeah, so my concern would just be that, that there is challenging, uh, navigation by folks who are using, uh, recycling and running in that area. And I think that there needs to be some relief, especially, um, because you can see we're citing it for a forty mile per hour, uh, rating. It, it's a, it's a fairly fast traveled section of the road. So my concern would be that it, that it doesn't, uh, doesn't resolve that issue.
It is, it is, the design for the driveway's site distance has been adjusted for forty miles an hours, even though it is a thirty mile an hour zone. So, that's kind of a condition that was, um, that was made to basically help alleviate that, that windiness, so that makes sure that we had adequate site distance safety for pedestrians as well as vehicles. That area is actually, there's some fairly steep slopes coming through there. Essentially, as far as the drainage goes, uh, a pedestrian or a sidewalk in that area, um, would cause additional, um, engineering requirements as far as trying to get a sidewalk designed in there. I don't think it would necessarily be as beneficial as it, as it could be.
And I agree with you, my concern is that if we have the opportunity here, under a waiver application that you're making, um, I would say that, you know, you're asking us to give up that requirement. And so I would, my, my suggestion would be that if there was some modifications that could be made to the road itself, to offer just some relief to folks that are traveling on that edge.
We could certainly, um, we could certainly explore that option. Something else we may want to consider is if there is, um, I, I'm a little bit concerned that, as far as if you start changing, people are familiar with the roadway the way it is now, whether it's, whether people feel that it's safe or not. I think as you make, if you make piecemeal changes to it, um, I, I don't know if it could increase actually the hazard where someone feels safe on this corner, and they're not paying attention, um, if you had a wider, um, pedestrian way or, I mean, we can do what we can with our property. And other abutting properties, obviously, I mean, we can't make any adjustments there. Are you suggesting that perhaps, uh, widening the road, or, or increasing the pavement, or?
Or ju- just so that there, you know, the, the edge of the road offers that relief, you know, so that there's a, there's a gravel edge to it?
Sure.
That currently doesn't exist right now, it's, to find relief, uh, as either, even as a cyclist would be, you know, you, you would end up putting yourself into the woods pretty hard.
Sure.
Um, and so I, that's what, um, you know, that I've heard and I've encountered myself, is it's just it's very tight. So, you know, where we can either, you know, wherever there's a driveway that's intersecting the road, certainly make sure that there's clear visibility for that, um, that pedestrian access. You know, uh, whether it's an approach to it or something, just those types of reliefs would be what I would suggest, if I was going to, you know, support a waiver, that I would see some of those kind of things here.
Part of the discussion was that we were going to have to, Brett Vaughn, uh, we're going to need to remove quite a few of the, the trees and take down some of the wall areas, so that we have that, that clear view, so we plan on doing that.
Great, great, that, that's, it would be nice to see that on the plan, and, or at least it'd be written in the, in the waiver application, that it offers some gravel, again, access or relief to folks that are, you know, might be encountered by two cars in a driveway, a person exiting the driveway.
It may be, since you plan to put the houses up in the front, that that's kind of the front lawn, or whatever, but flat level grading that would allow somebody to step out of the way if they saw a car coming, and have a little space that isn't directly into the woods with, you know, a bit of a slope, or a drop off, or a ditch, or something like that. Obviously, um, every inch of Wilson Hill Road suffers from that narrowness, and you got a couple of guys, one that lives on it, and one that used to live on it, and I go to visit this guy once in a while, we've all been on it. Um, I can't imagine a narrower road in town, um, it really is kind of a, I don't, I don't know what the town's plan is for when that will be, um, repaved as a matter of its usual maintenance, and whether there'd be any thing they could do about it for then. But, um, obviously you've only controlled this couple of hundred feet of it, but allowing even that little bit of relief at, at, right in front of your lots would be, you know, some bit of benefit. Not a paved pedestrian way or something, but just a little, something that makes it a little bit more comfortable as a. Breathing space, yeah, I think it's a good, good way to describe it.
And I think as, as Brett mentioned, a lot of that will happen probably by default, when, when, uh, when the driveway, when the clearings for the site distance comes in, and some of the regrading for, uh, with the stone walls, um, and the trees that need to get removed. As well as that, you know, the additional easement to widen, you know, at least allow for a wider right of way, um, if the town chose to, at some point, basically, expand that, the paved area, or the shoulder, um, in that situation.
Would you be comfortable as a part of the waiver, I mean, since it's something you're going to do a lot of anyway, because you have to for the driveways and all of that, if that's the trade off for the waiver, is that you agree that for those lot frontage, that kind of grading is accomplished, that's, that gives apron space, not paved pedestrian space at the edge of pavement?
You mean like paved, you mean a paved apron?
No, no.
I think it's more just, just a shoulder that's, that's accessible, that's flat, that's safe, so that.
Yeah, I like that idea.
You could step off.
I think that would be nice.
Well, my concern is with the stone wall, it, as I look at this map, it looks to me like the stone wall is pretty close to the road, and, uh, I'd hate to see the stone wall disappear, too.
Be included, but I think that we can have an attractive, safe driveway area and still maintain the rest of the walls, or maybe even rebuild them a little and, and sharpen them up.
It would mean rebuilding a little bit of stone.
And I have no problem with that, I like that idea. I mean, we, we picture this as a pretty, those are beautiful lots, and, and we, we're proposing another subdivision across the road that we've, we've been in front of the board on, and, and, uh, that will have sidewalks.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, underground utilities and everything, and I, it's my desire to have that area, uh, first class, and safe. So, I'll do everything that I can to make that happen, unlike most of Wilson Hill Road. Particularly, the other way, yeah.
No, I understand, and there's absolutely a trade off between creating the little space that we're talking about and those stone walls, and we've had opportunities where we've told folks we want to see the wall stay, and other ones where we want to do it. The board, as board members, we got to figure out what advice we're going to give this guy, because you can't have the cake and eat it, too.
You've got to go out there and look at it.
Well, they're beat up, you know, they've, they've been hit, maybe tore down over the years, and, and certainly would, I would do it even if the board didn't require it, to try to square them off and have them look repaired and, and pleasant, and safe.
Make sure they're not monuments for any of the boundary lines, because moving those is a whole other issue.
Can we then say that, you know, there would be some range between three to five feet along this edge, that you would look to remove vegetation and/or rebuild or realign stone walls to provide some means of relief to pedestrians as an alternative to a sidewalk?
I think as long as we had a little bit of flexibility in, if it, you know, when you go out and look at the walls, if it's actually possible, like Nelson says, if, there'd have to be some wording there that, within reason.
Yeah, like we don't have three feet.
Right, right.
But there is, there is a fair amount of, uh, poison ivy, which nobody would mind getting rid of on those walls, so, um, that could certainly help. It would make me feel safer stepping aside and not having to jump in the poison ivy, so, um, you know, those, that type of vegetation and dressing up the walls is going to basically straighten it out, and obviously you have a, a, an opportunity at that time to basically make that, make a safe transition there, that whatever we have available will certainly be utilized to do that.
Jillian, do you think that this discussion has given you enough to take the ball and run with it if we vote on this concept?
Yeah, I've noted provide three to five feet of clear space within the right of way in lieu of sidewalk, which would mean clearing trees and brush and grading when necessary. Is that?
Where?
When feasible.
Where fea- where feasible, or something, you know?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay.
As a note, would that work?
Yeah, I think that'd be a note on the plan in, in exchange for the waiver.
He's asking for three to five, I need to.
Yeah.
If that's what, if that's the will of the board, obviously.
Three to five feet within the right of way.
What's that?
Three to five feet within the right of way.
Yeah. Edge of existing pavement, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions on this sidewalk situation?
One of the question, you, the twenty-five feet you mentioned, that's from the center line of the existing road, that's our usual.
That's correct.
It wasn't there before, though.
What's that?
It wasn't there before.
Oh, no, yeah, right, yeah, but you're granting that along your whole frontage, I wanted to understand that, thank you, yeah, that's correct, that's the way our regulations read, yeah.
Yeah, Dawn confirmed that in her memo, that it's there, on the ends. Any other questions? Uh, then we, it's, uh, appropriate to consider a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion, we grant a waiver of section four dot zero six dot one dot R of the regulations, on the basis that strict, specific circumstances relative to the subdivision and the conditions and the land indicate the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Is there a second for Alister's motion? I think Vinnie raised his hand, he didn't say anything, but I'll call, I'll count him as the second today. Uh, if there's no other discussion on the sidewalk waiver, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, seven zero zero to grant the sidewalk waiver. There are no other waiver requests, we're not waiving full site plan or subdivision review. Let's open up the floor for abutters and citizens who wish to weigh in and offer the board anything to consider on this application. Are there any, anybody in the room that wishes to weigh in? Uh, then let me take this moment to, I'm going to summarize this email, because it's rather lengthy, uh, from Mr. Martin, so that the board's aware of what his concerns are. He has several questions about the parcel D wedge of land abutting his property, and what it's for, and what its purposes are. I think that, um, in terms of testimony for the board, I think he'll have to rely on either the, the videotape of this, or whatever he can glean from the file, to, uh, resolve the questions that he has. They're simply about the layout, does the applicant, um, meet the criteria and those sorts of things. Regarding the subdivision plan, he says, he has concerns that if the lot line adjustment is permitted, it could mean that any new construction could be very close to his existing property lines. His concerns continue with, like anyone, we would be concerned over water quality and quantity with new wells being dug and drilled in the area. Uh, he has, uh, concerns about the impact on existing wildlife habitat, and the fact that it's woodlands as it exists today. He is concerned about the placement of driveways of possible new home, concerned about the amount of fill that may be needed for the new home and the driveway, and how it would impact the existing natural drainage. Concerned about the removal of the existing double field stone wall that acts as, as the existing property line, with respect to the aesthetics, history of the area, and, uh, barrier between lots. He's concerned about the future property values and future tax assessments and evaluation of his property. Um, he indicates that most of the issues he's discussed with Mr. Vaughn on several occasions during general conversation, and, uh, about other planned new homes along the road, and just recently, um, some specifics about the current proposal under review. Um, and he closes his, uh, letter with an indication that he hopes to emerge with a better understanding of the process the town uses in determining what it approves, and the expected impacts on the effect of abutters. Do you want to respond to any of the applicant's concerns that were, not applicant, the, uh, letter writers' concerns, your abutters' concerns?
Sure, I, I think I got a few of them down. I, I suspect that the stone wall that, that he's talking about is, is maybe this one here?
It is, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's the one that abuts?
Right, I mean, and right now, I don't think that we're proposing removing that wall.
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make any sense, it's not, um, there's no intent to do that, it wouldn't, it's a beautiful wall.
Oh, come on, you've got to move it a bit, because otherwise the four A twenty-two, and then your new four A twenty-two, will have a stone wall halfway across.
Oh, no, no.
I misunderstood you, then.
Yeah, let me, let me, because I'm, I did. We've been looking at so much. Do you have the driveway layout planned?
Yes.
So, there's his, there's, that's the wall that we're talking about, here's where the proposed drive is coming in, and this barn will have to be removed. And the, the building area, you know, we don't have the whole thing. Well, yeah, but the building area. Oh, jeez. That does, no, that shows a house right on the other side of it.
Yes.
Oops, now that bit's well back off the road, but it's still part of it.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I'm not seeing this correctly, this is the line of the property.
That's the property.
So, this stone wall is on my property.
Oh, it's on your property, never, we're not arguing about it. What I'm saying is, when, when you've got that new lot created, that lot will have a stone wall half bisecting the lot, if you can see, you see my point?
Well, right, this, this stone wall, according to where we, where we'd planned that, that part of that would be removed, but we'd like to leave as much as possible, but yes, that stone wall.
Will have to, it might have to be modified.
Absolutely, I'm sorry, I thought, I was for some reason thinking there was a stone wall along his property.
No, 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 it's the stone wall that divides the property. You may well have to modify it a bit.
And, and actually, um, it is possible to move that back over and save that stone wall, which, actually, as I'm looking at it right now, I'd probably prefer to have, but is there a problem with me removing that wall?
Uh, when it's completely internal to your property, I mean, we can always sort of implore you to protect whatever historical value it has, but if it's completely inside your property, you know, you don't need our permission for anything.
Yeah.
It's your wall, do whatever you want with it.
I kind of, as we're talking about it, I kind of like to maybe save the stone wall and move that over, and I think there's a way to do that, we don't have the whole site, there's, there is an issue with the setbacks and the wetland setback that pushes us up there a little bit, but.
So for the sake of discussions, I, I just want to be very, very careful, because as a part of approvals, usually the things that you say and promise and commit to are conditions of approval, or things that you've represented to us. I want to make clear, we don't have any jurisdiction over your wall, you can do whatever you want with it.
That's what I was asking.
If you'd like to keep it, great, we support that, I kind of like the walls, but if you choose not to, I want to make it clear, I mean, I appreciate the neighbor's concerns, and he likes walls, too, I like them, they're great, but.
And I do, too, so I would say that I wouldn't make any promises.
That's fine.
In case I can't. I think I can move that over.
Just, when, when you started, you were making a promise, and then you.
Right, I was thinking that this was.
No, 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 we know what. And Brett, you can't make promises for the new owner, either, they may decide to remove it at some point as well.
Unless I build on it, right.
I knew, you can't make a promise for a new owner, right, right.
I mean, even if you built a house on it and sold the house, and the stone wall was there the day you sold it, they could still just decide they don't like it.
Well, we actually could, I mean, if it was, if it was an issue that I thought was a real issue, that you guys would say we couldn't do it, I could de, I could put a deed restriction on the property, saying that the stone walls must, you know, remain as they are.
So, the, the abutter was also concerned about, uh, water supply and wells, and I know that we've talked in a great detail about the water supply on the other side of the road. My understanding from the last time that we looked at this property, when, uh, My understanding from the last time that we looked at this property when we did the existing subdivision that you have, that the other side of the road is just night and day, completely different world.
But I, you, you can't guarantee anything, but, am I yelling to that? Am I talking to? Oh, all right, I got two. Like a rock concert. But the, in those other discussions, when we were talking about some on the other side, John, or Sean Farrell, you know, he went down like, I don't want to see exactly, but it's like a hundred something feet. He's got like 30 gallons a minute, you know, so he did real good. And Mike, the butter has, his is artesian. I mean, his is bubbling over, over the top.
There's, there's a significant soil change in, from one side of the road to the other.
It's different soil.
The soils are very well drained on this side. It's a little bit different from the other side, which has a little bit more ledge.
But what you just said, because Mr. What is his name, Mr. Michael has got an artesian well, he might be bothered. Oh, he's, he's expressing and saying maybe that artesian well might become a bit of a hostage when you start drilling a few more other wells. So he might be just why he's worrying. I'm just, we're trying to understand why he's worrying.
It, you know what?
Typically, it's not, it's not an issue.
Well, it would be if he's got to play what's his name's to drill a damn great hole down to get water.
It's my understanding that, that, I may be wrong, but it's my understanding, and I think we talked, we've talked about this and I think I had some support from Vincent when, before we sat down with our butters on the other place and worked, worked things out, that, that when you buy a piece of land in New Hampshire, you own what's on the land and what's under the land. And that it's, it's an issue that may be an issue. Nobody can tell. But it's, it's the law that you own one under. In any history of any arguments in the past, up until us redrawing our plans for the thing up on the hill, you've got the right to your water, not the guy that put his well in first. So if he did and he had to re-drill, who's saying he's not taking the water off of, of, of that property?
I understand.
You know, I mean, you can, we can, you know, geez, that, we've all learned, I learned a ton about, you know, the whole, whole water thing. So for me to sit here after three engineers or however many we had look at it and say, you can absolutely not say with, with absolute guarantee that one well won't affect another, the odds are miniscule.
Yep.
And then we're also on a side where if we wanted to argue what has been experienced on that side, there's a lot of water.
No, I'm just trying to underst, I'm just trying to understand what Mr. Martin is concerned about and hope that based on everything you've said and with goodwill and all the rest of it, he probably, he hasn't got a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He discussed sightlines and you've addressed the sightlines pretty well. He asked about wildlife, but that doesn't necessarily enter into something that we would regulate or deal with. And obviously, everybody that's ever lived next to woods would rather have woods there than a house. But it's not within our jurisdiction to allow that to happen or to restrict somebody's ability to develop property based on that. What were some of, is there anything else that was in his concerns? Oh, the dual concerns of the val, the value of his property and the value of his taxes. So I guess the taxes will go up and the value will go down or something like that. I don't know how you do both of those at once, but it's not necessarily something that's within the planning board's decision of your jurisdiction to weigh in on. He did talk about the fills necessary to create the driveways. Can you speak to that? Are there any significant areas where you're putting in a, a lot of fill in your driveways that's going to obstruct some of the drainage?
It has been designed basically to accommodate all the drainage. There are some areas that, you know, where you come off of the slopes here, where there'll be some fills. There is a, where this existing barn is, there's kind of a retaining wall here right now. So there is going to be some fill placed on here. Those line, I apologize, those lines aren't shown for, for clarity because there was just getting very busy on here. So there is some cutting and filling to these driveways, but you can kind of see the alignment here follows the contours to basically minimize that and allow for the drainage. The only drainage really coming off the other side is, you know, this one culvert here and there's really, you know, very minimal flow that, that comes out of here. And that's basically, it's, it stops here and it will be allowed to continue down into the wetland area around the house, so.
Do you have any need or are there any plans for culverts under the driveways?
Not at this time, no.
Okay.
With the possible exception, let me just add, whether there's something that's required on the, as far as the roadway permits on the driveway, if there's a driveway permit where the road agent requires a culvert at, at the, you know, the, the right of way, then that would certainly be installed. But I don't think all of these are coming off of the hill and they're all kind of on a crest. So all the drainage is kind of going off the side of it. So there's really nothing flowing through there.
So one of the comments from the town engineers, the catch basins on the north side of Wilson Hill Road are not connected and there isn't any further explanation in Dawn's memo. Do you know what she's referring to?
I do, and we've made the correction unfortunately. Well, this is a good example. It shows it here because we didn't correct the plan and profile where this line comes across to these two catch basins. That's not correct. It actually, like this one shows, it just goes across. This line is, does not connect and it just goes straight across here.
So she's just indicating that they're not connected and your plan indicated that they were. So she wants you to fix your plan?
That was an error.
Okay. Does that affect the drainage of whether they're interconnected or any desire to interconnect them or?
No, no. It was simply a mistake. Sometimes, a lot of times the catch basins are, are interconnected on larger roadways. These are fairly old catch basins on a fairly old road. It was more something probably put in initially by the farmers that just kind of, it was a big pile of stones that went across the roadway. So they're just kind of a leaching catch basin at one time. The water goes in, it infiltrates into the ground as much as it can. If there's overflow during a storm event, then it crosses through the culvert.
Okay. So then her culvert comment says that there's a discrepancy in the driveway location for lot four A twenty-two dash one between the subdivision plan and the site distance plan and profile sheets.
Yep.
The plan shows the driveway entering and going downhill to a house site. The profile depicts the same driveway as coming across the lot and turning in front of the road culvert outlet. The drainage easement has not been shown on the profile, uh, plan and profile. The location is indicated at this point should be shown in the same location and her concern is that the flow from the existing road culvert appears to be going directly towards the driveway and house.
Right. So what she's referring to is this, this lot here on, on twenty-two dash one.
Yep.
As it comes across here on this profile. We've gone through a few renditions, basically upgrading the driveways to try and come up with the best, the best alternatives and with the lot configurations. On the original plan, you'll see this, this kind of dark heavy line right here indicates a proposed driveway location. This was an, an earlier driveway configuration, which just simply comes down and kind of goes straight down. The new one now comes down and over and down. So that's really, it was an updated version on our driveway design. The correct one actually does come across and it's, it doesn't come straight down like this. So it, it does come over here like this and her, her mention, I believe, is to this culvert here, which outfalls. And then it comes down through this swale, which basically comes around this driveway that, actually, the low point in the swale is right on the edge of the driveway. So it comes over here, most of it infiltrates into the ground. We have basically sands and gravels in this area. So there's very little that actually, actually overflows and runs across the surface, except perhaps spring melt when you might have frozen or frost in the ground, you might see that. But that actually comes over here and then turns this way down through this low spot. So that driveway basically wraps around the edge of it and then it continues on to the wetland area.
Jillian, are you satisfied that making these two plans consistent before we get to signatures is covered in your note number seven in your conditions of approval? That he addressed the following comments from DPW and all of that?
It's, actually, I think it's item seven and then Roman numeral eight.
Right, this was based on Dawn's previous memo. So if we could say, address the following comments and any updated comments, that might-
Okay, so let's do that when we get to that point. Okay, so I think that addresses Mr. Martin's email and the concerns that he raises in that. Since there's nobody in the room who wishes to weigh in, we'll close the public hearing. And with that, we'll open up the floor for the board to ask questions or have discussion. Nelson?
Yeah, this and others have raised a couple of new questions in my mind I'd like to ask about. One of them is, on the lot of four A twenty-two, that driveway sightline, does that not go right through a shed? There's a shed on the adjacent lot or an existing shed.
That shed's gone too.
That's gone.
We got to take that, because that shed's right on the road.
Yeah.
That's got to go.
It's got to go.
Yeah.
I agree.
And I, and I think that, I don't know, that way, I think that's, that might be the, the end of the stone wall we were just talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's got a pretty good sized boulder on the end of it that might have to go.
Yeah.
But that's all in the discussion that we had about cleaning up the front the best we can, so.
Okay, I think the shed's got to go and I want to point that out because of the sightline.
The shed in the barn, well, got to go, they're just, they're too close.
Yeah, and they're not salvageable. The other thing I wanted to ask for, ask about was these outfalls of drainage onto these lots. Do we, the town, get an easement for that drainage? And that's town drainage going on to private property. And in the old days, nobody cared, but nowadays, it's important.
Correct, and, and there is, the actual outfall is within the town right of way. So initially, we didn't have any, any easement shown on that. But since with the DPW's comments, we have shown it. Again, this is something that we'll take care of so that it shows on the plan and profile as well. It does show on this plan. Does it show on this one here? It does show on this one here, there's a 10 by 15 foot easement for that drainage. And I believe it's on this one as well. Yeah, and so proposed drainage easement here at 10 by 15 foot, that culvert outfall. So we will make that consistent with the other, with the plan and profiles.
So that's an easement on the, on the new lot.
That's correct.
That will carry, will carry forward, allow the town to dump the water there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mike?
Just make note that during the extreme events that we've had, storm events that we've had, there is some heavy flows that do come out of that. So I think it, maintaining that swale and just making sure that any future homeowners know about that will be critical for them in this, you know, the stability of their driveway and their home. So just making note of that. The second thing is I would concur that with regards to the water availability, this whole area is much more closer to the South Eagan aquifer and has such a plentiful amount of, of water supply. And it does seem to be in a different area. And we aren't hearing what we're hearing with some of the other, with the other subdivision, that the, the issues of water or the lack of water with this site. So I would agree that, that the supply is likely more plentiful and could support the four lot, proposed four lot subdivision. And that was it.
Thanks, Mike. Any other comments or questions? And what's the will of the board with respect to taking final action?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We grant, we accept the grant final approval for the lot line adjustment as indicated in the memo from Jillian dated 15th of February, plus the additional agreement, undertakings given during the course of the meeting. And then we can approve it.
I'm sure you meant to say conditional final approval, right?
I did mean conditional final approval.
Is there a second for that? Lynn's got the second for that. If there's any further discussion on approving the subdivision, subject to conditions in the memo and the ones discussed here tonight. No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero, you are approved.
Go, good to go.
Good, thank you very much.
Michael, I'll push.
Now, I have an agenda here somewhere that told me what to do next.
Specialist Auto and Truck, Specialist Autos.
Item five on our agenda is Specialist Auto and Truck NH LLC. Review for consideration of waiver, full site plan review to add motor vehicle sales to an existing automotive service business. The parcel is located at 422 DW Highway in the C2 General Commercial and offer conservation elderly and town center overlay districts, tax map five D dash four, lot four. Jillian, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from this applicant?
They, yes, they are seeking to supplement their existing automotive service and repair business with storage and sales of new and used vehicles. They did receive a special exception for the proposed use in January and they are not proposing site changes, but to use existing parking spaces on site. We have done a calculation and the parking requirements are met with what's on site for both businesses, for both parts of the business.
So if they've already got a special exception for this, what are we actually considering?
A waiver, full site plan review.
Okay. Please come forward. Tell us what you need. Thanks for hanging out for two hours.
Hey, no problem. What else was I going to do tonight, right? One could give you an answer to that, but we won't.
Don't forget when you get done signing in to introduce yourself and tell us what you're proposing. Probably scared of us now, huh?
Yeah, kind of. Kind of committed at this point, right? All right, basically.
Your name, sir, please.
Dustin Jackson, sorry. Let me unfold this. Basically, we're-
One more time with the name.
Dustin Jackson.
There you go.
There we go. Looking to add motor vehicle sales to the existing automotive business that we have. We've already received approval by the zoning commission and they suggested that we come to you with basically the allocation of the parking spots that we're going to use dedicated to the sales portion of the business.
Okay. So you're doing repairs and you want to do sales? How many cars do you plan to have on display for sales?
If you look at the site plan here, we have basically highlighted out a maximum of 10 spaces in the back, which would still leave us our parking for a normal day to day that we've got going on without infringing on that.
So you're saying no more than 10 cars for sale at any one time?
Yeah, basically.
Oh, your parking is back in back of the building?
Uh, yes, and then there is some spots on the side. There's six spaces to the left of the building and there's one on the right.
So-
But the majority of it, yes, is in the, in the rear.
So normally, a proposal like this, the applicant wants to put the cars out by the street so everybody can see them.
Uh, basically, if you look at the note, most of the sales are pretty much done online now anyway. You know, the advertising and everything. I'm not looking to stick a whole bunch of cars out front with flags on them with the little wavy arm man, you know.
Well, that's good news.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a, I'm primarily a, yeah, I'm primarily a, a repair shop, you know, and this is just a supplemental income. I'm not, you know, looking to stock the lot with 48 cars and, you know, so that you can't move and I can't conduct the business that I do now, so.
Sounds good. Will there be any change in signage so people know there's cars for sale? Or is it just really going to be attracted people by online, put them on Craigslist or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, mainly just, just online sales is, is the majority of it. Maybe we'll add something to the existing sign, but.
You have a movable letter sign that-
We do have a movable letter.
That anything could be put on there that you want?
Anything could be put up there, exactly, so.
Okay, yeah, so you don't need any permission to change any of that stuff, as long as you don't do it more than once every 20 minutes? Nelson, is that right?
It's one, you put up the letters by hand.
Yeah, it'd be hard to change it every 20 minutes, but you're good.
You don't have to worry about that one.
Yeah, we're not going to put up one of those lighted boards you can see from space, so.
Are these, are these going to be cars that you own yourself or are these going to be things you take on consignment for people or?
No, I mean, it's going to be stuff, the planning to be stuff that, that we own and is for sale by us, so.
Okay. Any members of the board have any other question? How about it? Let's hear it.
Well, okay, my first question is why, what was the need to go for a special exception? What is the ordinance that requires that?
The zoning ordinance requires it in the C2 district.
Oh, is it, okay, for the district that they're in? Okay, all right, cool.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that until I had already submitted to the state for the dealer application because I figured we were zoned for it, being an automotive repair facility. And then it came back from the state saying that it wasn't approved by the town. So then I went to the town, found out that it needed a special exception, so here we sit.
And how many cars? And how many cars for sale at one time? What are you looking at?
We got 10 spaces marked out in the back, so.
That's what the board approved.
As long as we can stay under 10, then, you know, we meet our obligations for the rest of the parking spots to conduct normal business.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion therefore that we, do we have to accept this for review? Yes, we do. I, we, I make a motion that we, the board accepts this matter for, for view as it is substantially complete and contains all the information necessary to invoke, invoke the board's jurisdiction.
Is there a second? Second by Lynn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700 to accept. The application is complete. There's some discussion in the notes that I have from staff that we should decide whether a sidewalk waiver is required, or if, if we do decide that it is, should we grant a waiver, or should we consider it to be part of our waiver of full site plan review? That second choice has been what we've gone with more recently, is deciding that it's not necessary as a part of full site plan review. Does everybody feel the same way?
There is another alternative, Mr. Chairman.
Requiring a sidewalk. Yes, absolutely.
I would advocate for that.
Nelson wants to require a sidewalk. Any other discussion on how we treat that? Is it the consensus of the board minus Nelson?
Who's not voting? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant a waiver for the requirement for a site review.
Okay, that's a little bit of a different approach.
And include.
Let's word that differently.
Are you granting a waiver or determining that it's not necessary?
I'm granting a waiver for, for a waiver of full site plan review and will include that no separate sidewalk waiver is needed.
There you go. Waiving full site plan review and determining that no sidewalk waiver is needed. Is there a second for that motion? Second by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So that was.
I'm not allowed to vote.
I know, Tom, you were a little late, though. Were you, yes?
I said yes.
Yes, okay, so that is a 700 vote. Although the room looks pretty empty, let's go ahead and deal with a public hearing and see if there's any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in. Seeing none, we've had a public hearing, and we'll close that. Is there any further discussion? Nick, come forward if you want to.
Oh, no, no, I just, I don't wanna do the signs for 30 minutes, so. I don't wanna do the signs, so.
Okay, fair enough. You'll change the sign.
20 minutes.
Chairman, I make a motion. We grant approval for this application. Subject to the, subject to the memo dated February 15th from Mr. Tim Thompson.
Conditional final approval, subject to the conditions in the staff memo. Is there a second for that? Second by, Vinnie, you got him?
Was the vote previous for the waiver only, then?
It was for, to waive full site plan review and to determine that sidewalk was not necessary. Are we good? Okay, good. Okay, so we've got a motion and properly seconded on the floor to grant conditional final approval, subject to the conditions in the staff memo. Is there any further discussion on that motion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700. It wasn't so bad, huh?
That was not.
All right, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you take requests for cars?
There we go.
Hey, you look like.
Wouldn't let me vote, that's why.
You gave that up, you could've said earlier on. No, I couldn't.
Keep my eyes peeled, just for you.
There you go. Okay, item six on our agenda is discussion of possible action regarding other items of concern. I have in my package two issues regarding bonds. One is, the first on my list is the Old Blood Road Performance Bond. For that, I have a memo from Dawn Tuamala to Tim Thompson indicating that there's a request made to reduce the performance bond for the subject subdivision. It's recommended by the Department of Public Works to reduce the bond to $60,989 and extend the bond for up to another two years. As has been discussed in the past, the intention is to finish the road in conjunction with the proposed 70-plus lot subdivision project along Old Blood Road that was recently approved in November of 2016. The total bond request of $60,989 is sufficient to cover the remaining right-of-way work and the construction of the stone wall, including footing. The future two-year maintenance bond for this section of right-of-way improvement shall be in the amount of $11,535. Now, I think it was probably not November of 2016 when we dealt with that one on Old Blood Road, but maybe 2015.
Yes, I think.
For Chestnut Hill. But other than that, that's the information that we have, is the recommendation to reduce the bond to roughly $61,000 and to extend it for two years. What's the will of the board?
I will so move.
So move by Lynn, second by Mr. Russo. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700 to establish that bond.
In fact, Mr. Chairman, if you go back and look at some of the paperwork, I think it's, it was considerably older than 2016. I think it looks like 2011, but we, I'm not.
Well, we've been chewing on Chestnut Hill for a while. I'm not sure when they got approval.
I'm not gonna raise the issue.
The other bond issue is Barbie Court Road Bond Estimate Form for the Cota Subdivision. This is a memo from Dawn Tuamala to Tim Thompson. It indicates two bond estimate forms have been received for the right-of-way improvements on Barbie Court and the cross-country sewer connections, along with construction of the siphon. Barbie Court is part of the cluster subdivision on the Cota property. The estimate forms were completed by Meridian Land Services. I'm trying to figure out how to shorten this memo, this seems to go on for quite a bit. The first bond estimate form is for the pre-construction cost of Barbie Court, the sewer line, and the siphon. The total bond amount of $500,666.78 is sufficient to complete all of the improvements scheduled in the approved plan sets, including the waterline work and sewer and siphon work, and the prices are approved by Dave Frederickson of MVD Distribution and Ken Conady, Sewer Inspector, respectively. The bond estimate will be used when the bond is changed from a performance bond to a maintenance bond. The future maintenance bond shall be in the amount of $50,066.78. The second bond is a performance bond, reducing the amount by improvements that have been completed. The total of $366,284.08 is sufficient to cover the remaining right-of-way work, the cross-country sewer line construction, and the siphon construction. The bond will be required to be in place before the building permits on Barbie Court are issued, unless all improvements are completed prior to the request. The owner has requested a performance bond length of six months, which the department is agreeable to. The owner understands that the end of six months, the project needs to be completed. Should that not occur, DPW will require an updated bond estimate form, or will request calling the bond by the planning board. Should you have any questions, please let me know. So we are asked to approve two separate bonds in the approximate amounts of $501,000 and $366,000 for the purposes discussed. The town engineer is recommending those amounts.
Well, that's, Mr. Chairman, actually, isn't it, we, the first bond was, was the, was the basic bond, but then it sort of amended down to, from five, whatever it is, $500,000 down to $366,000, because they'd be having some of the work subsequently. Am I got it right?
Yes, you're right. There is one bond being established, that the initial one is for $500,000, and then we're immediately reducing it to $366,000.
That's what I wanted to say. Thank you, you put it better, much better than I did.
And I stumbled on it the first time. Thanks for calling me on that. So that's what we're doing, is establishing a bond, and then reducing it to $366,284.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we agree to the requests as submitted by Dawn Tuamala, the Deputy Director of Town Engineer, and that the original bond of $566, $50666 shall first be posted, and then it can be reduced down to $366,284.00.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Mr. Russo's got the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700 to deal with that business. Does any member of the board have any other items of concern or discussion? Seeing none. Nelson, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a request to the board to consider taking up some of the planning issues in the master plan that we adopted three years ago, and we haven't done much of anything with. And I think that we should devote some of our time, some of our meetings, or some of the nights we don't have meetings or whatever, to considering some of those items, especially, of course, some of my favorite items are in there. But there's a lot of items that have just sat there. Since we adopted the master plan, we've done basically little to nothing with it, and I would like to recommend that to the board.
I think that makes sense. Other thoughts and comments? How about if we consider, we meet basically twice a month unless there's more applications or a holiday that makes us meet less than twice a month. Why don't we, in one of those two monthly meetings, have a regular agenda item to take a look at where we stand on master plan items? Will that work?
That's a start.
First one or second one?
Maybe address a specific one or two items in the master plan, so that we know which ones we're gonna be talking about?
That makes sense. Your microphone isn't turned on, but for the folks at home, the suggestion is to pick one or two of the planning board's to-do list out of the master plan to discuss at each one of those meetings. I think that makes sense, too.
We have a nice list there, nice long list.
Could I, could I further amplify that, Mr. Chairman, in that we task Mr. Disco with the obligation of suggesting the order in which some of these items should be discussed?
Um, yes, but in consultation with the staff.
Of course.
Because a lot of these things have.
Yes.
Different pieces that the dominoes all have to move in the same direction at the same time.
I would agree.
And there's reasons for the order. But with consultation with staff, yes, why don't we pick the first meeting of each month that we deal with to have a regular agenda item to take up this bit of business?
Good, yeah.
And I think it makes sense in our package that's mailed to us to have some bit of backup information as to what these couple of issues are from the master plan, without, without putting too much of a burden on anybody to create or present that information. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I don't think that requires any kind of a vote. Any other discussion items for anyone? Want to bring up? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any minutes that we're approving?
Yes, the January 17th meeting.
What's the will of the board with respect to approval of the meeting minutes of January 17th, 2017?
Oh, I had it.
Mr. Russo.
Page 10, line 25.
Turn your microphone on, please.
Line 24, 25, but the correction will be in line 25. Said Vincent Russo noted that Skip Marine at 54 Denial did not inform the planning board that he operates two businesses on the property. Actually, what I indicated is that there were two businesses operating on the property. So I'd like to strike "he operates" and insert "operate" after the word "businesses."
Makes sense.
Okay, fair enough. Nelson?
And I had one other on page two, line 27. It says, Alistair Mills and Nelson Disco said, "The space does not interfere with the sightline up to DW Highway." I was going to say up, up DW Highway, rather than up to the highway. It's up the highway that we were talking about. This is.
Yeah.
The sightline, okay. A minor thing, but.
Okay. Just, Lynn, if you're trying to make a motion?
I would move approval of the minutes with those two suggested corrections.
Is there a second for Lynn's motion?
Second.
You're not gonna let the, the new guy make them?
Oh, go ahead.
Hold on. I've been, I've been trying to get him to do it all night.
I knew you were trying to get him to do it.
All right, Joe, the new guy seconds.
No, no, not the new guy. New guy. I yield to the new guy.
Paul, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Sorry for picking on you a little bit. All in favor of approving the minutes, subject to a couple of changes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? One abstaining, so 601 with Tom Kanning abstaining.
On that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russo. All in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700. We're adjourned. Don't forget to turn the microphones off.